Seven o'clock.
Uh, we can't hear you. Theresa, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, yes.
Okay, great. So I will be, this is seven o'clock. I'm calling the Manoa Neighborhood Board to order at this time on May first. And first off, we like to hear from the Honolulu Fire Department, please.
Oh wait, uh, Theresa, can we take attendance first? Cause I don't know if we have more.
Oh, that is important. So yes, uh, please go ahead and move forward with the quorum.
Okay, uh, when I call your name, please say here. Uh, of course, uh, Zane.
Here.
Uh, Watson.
Here.
Bozol. Bozol. Okay, uh, Nagaji.
Here.
Uh, Elton.
Here.
Okay, uh, Lumen. Lumen, okay, uh, Lee. Lee. Okay, uh, Koff.
Koff.
Here.
Okay. Uh, Diane, Diane Tong. Tong. Okay. Moilin.
Here.
Okay, uh, Kowano. Kowano. Okay. Uh, Fox. Fox.
Here.
Okay. Uh, and Mishreki. Mishreki, okay.
I'm here. Hi, everyone.
Oh yeah, that's eight, uh, we don't have quorum.
Okay, good to know. Uh, hopefully that'll change as the meeting progresses. Uh, don't have anything on the, to vote on at the immediate moment though. So, uh, moving back onto the agenda, we'll go with the Honolulu Fire Department first, please.
Hey, how's it? Good evening, I'm Captain Jacob Napajima. Just gonna go over the April twenty twenty-four statistics for the Manoa area. We had two structure fires. One nuisance call, eight activated fire alarms with no fires. Forty-four medicals. Seven motor vehicle crashes and one mountain rescue. And then we have a, our fire safety tip of the month is going to be read by firefighter recruit Shawn Ferguson, who just started here two weeks ago. So he's gonna read this to you guys.
Good evening, uh, my name is firefighter recruit Shawn Ferguson. Uh, for this month's fire safety tip is in regards to wildland fire awareness, prevention and preparedness. So wildland fires significantly threaten Hawaii's landscapes, wildlife and communities, with dry conditions and everyday activities contributing to the increased risk. It's crucial to take proactive measures to prevent and mitigate wildland fires. So some tips that we have are to lighten the load, reduce fuels and the possibility of ignition of your landscape by maintaining your yard and cleaning your gutters. Clear, cool and contain, clear vegetation ten feet around campfires and barbecues. Keep a shovel and water nearby and put them out cold before walking away. Watch the spark, ensure machineries, chainsaws, weed trimmers, and recreational vehicles with operating spark arresters are maintained regularly. And to learn more about these online resources, uh, HFD's website is fire.honolulu.gov. Department of Emergency Management, honolulu.gov backslash D E M. And Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization is at h w m o dot org backslash lookout. Thank you.
You guys have any questions about anything?
Chair. Chair, you're muted.
Uh, sorry, Elton, uh, since Zane's out, I'm gonna be acting sure until he's back in. So, uh, Elton, uh, go ahead.
Yes, thank, thank you, um. Yeah, this is to the Fire Department. The mayor had a town hall meeting last week. And, uh, the, the deputy chief, fire, uh, Fire Department Chief, uh, came over and, um, told me that he, I, I actually spoke on, on wildfires and, um, he came over and said that he would contact me, he hasn't contacted me yet, so if you could ask him to just write me an email. Uh, and so I will then respond to, uh, give him some of the information. Actually, that, that is in our, our resolution today, but my email address is E T F U K U M O T O at gmail dot com. And my name is Elton, as in Elton John Fukamoto.
So that's, I got E Fukamoto at gmail dot com and you wanted the deputy chief to get in contact with you. Is that correct?
Yes, E T Fukamoto, right? Is that what you have?
Oh, E T.
Yeah, E T.
E T Fukamoto.
Yes.
E T.
Uh huh.
Oh, oh yeah, yeah, E T, okay. And deputy chief, he said he was gonna get in contact with you and he has not, and you just wanted to update then.
Yes, I, I'd like him to contact me.
Okay, uh, I'll get that message to him.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, no problem.
All right, thank you, Elton, uh, Robert, you just, Robert's in, just holler when you're back and we'll pass the gavel back to you.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Oh yeah, you're good, passing the gavel back to you.
Thanks Dave, sorry about that, my microphone's not working so well, it keeps on going off and on, so apologies for the technical issues. Um, does anybody else have any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department?
Uh, Chair, this is just a general note, but for the Fire Department, you mentioned some, uh, websites or links that you wanted people to look at for information. I would just suggest you write them down in the chat so that people can copy and paste them, it's a lot easier.
Okay, we can put them in the chat. And I think, uh, you guys also get that, the email of that too, so I, I don't know if they're gonna, they can disperse that, but I'll, I'll put them in the chat for the different contact emails for the, uh, to learn about the wildfires.
Okay, uh, thank you, Member Bozol, so anybody else from the community who wants to, um, have any questions or comments for the Honolulu Fire Department? I am.
Sorry, I have a quick question.
Go ahead, uh, who is this?
This is Ellen.
Okay, Ellen, go ahead.
Uh, I'm just wondering in anticipation of another hot, dry summer, if there's been any specific discussions, um, amongst fire specialists about, um, anything that can be done preventatively to keep another fire from starting on Wahele Ridge?
Uh, I haven't heard any discussions about up there yet. I, I know they have a homeless population up there that might have started several times. But, uh, nothing specific for, for up there, cause, um, it's just, uh, we call it, there's a lot of brush and it's deep where they are. So we, we will, uh, respond quickly if we see anything and then we get a lot of calls sometimes when people say smoke and we get there as quick as possible to mitigate any further spread.
Do you know if there are any, um, fire resistant shrubs or plants that have been considered or, you know, for plantings up there? Or fire breaks? Or is that not really a thing?
Uh, I've not heard any discussions for up there, cause, you know, there's a lot of native species and stuff, so uh, and it's such a large area. Like, if you, if you're doing what I think you're talking about doing, I think you could only probably do something like that just in your yard. You know, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, like native species are more fire resistant in general?
No, no, what I'm saying is, um, not putting a different species up there, you know, that are, aren't, um, what do you call it, uh, natural to that habitat. So like what you're saying is you want more, uh, type of, of plants that are more, uh, um, fire resistant or, you know, don't catch fires quickly. You could probably only really do that in a smaller area like your own home or something. Or in your yard.
Okay, and then last question, I've heard through the grapevine of a couple months, a few months ago, that Hawaii Kai has a completed, uh, wildfire emergency plan, but that they do not want to share it with other communities for some reason. Is wildfire planning being done on kind of a siloed basis like that where communities don't share each other's plans? I, I was really surprised to hear that from somebody that attended a conference a few months ago about wildfire, um, planning.
Uh, I, I haven't heard that. Because you're saying, um, that people are planning, uh, making a wildfire, fire plan without, cause, uh, there's a different lot of like, keep, uh, what do you call FEMA and different things and the Fire Department, and I, I know they, they come up with mitigation plans, like we have a, uh, what do you call it, um? Uh, we, uh, how we work with all the different resources, like to work together for the larger fires, still like for most fires, we, we are enough with, uh, Honolulu Fire Department, but if it gets bigger, you know, we also have state, we also have, um, federal, then we, then we also have FEMA and then we have the Hawaii Wildfire Management, we have them. We also can bring in, um, different organizations with larger machinery as, as the things get, as, uh, what do you call it, um? If the situation gets larger. But, but I haven't heard them making plans that they're not sharing or don't want to share with anyone. Cause I'm sure if they have a plan, they would wanna, when it's finalized, they would want to share it. Maybe, maybe you might have heard early stages, but, but I haven't heard what you heard.
Okay, I'll check back with the person that taught me that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Member Fox?
You're welcome.
Now, thank you, um, I'm a little concerned about the fire season coming up because we still do not have a systematic, um, communication grid between, uh, city, county, state, and federal fire prevention. Uh, we've been talking about, you know, the results of the Lahaina fire. And one of the big problems is communication. Uh, I'll give a specific example here on Oahu that bothers me a great deal. We have over forty-four homeless encampments on the side of Diamond Head Mountain. Now, that's not Manoa, but it's our island. Um, let alone encampments, uh, on the mountain going down to the beach by Lighthouse area. Um, but we're talking about state-owned land, not city-owned land. And yet we don't seem to have any kind of coordination happening here about clearing out those homeless encampments, getting rid of the fire danger that's up there, and it's significant. Um, can you talk to us about what kind of systematic change we've made between the city and county and the state and federal government regarding, uh, fire hazard prevention?
So, so what is your question, it's about homeless encampments and?
Well, this is one example of where we need to have a coordination between the state and the city because part of that is state-owned land and part of that is city-owned land. And we can ask the city to do something if it's state land. We have to ask the state for doing that. And we've always been frustrated decades on trying to get a coordinated effort between the state and the city regarding fire prevention, particularly with homeless encampments on the side of the mountains. These are multimillion dollar homes which are just adjacent to these very hazardous areas.
Yeah, um, I'm sorry to interject, but, um, Lieutenant Tara Nakamura from the Police Department, um, I, I think, um, not to butt into fireside or anything like that, but yeah, you know, um, it's good that you brought up that, that issue about the homeless encampments at, at Diamond Head. And I can tell you for just, you know, just to answer your part of the question, sir, um, or the police side of the question, um, as a district in D seven, we have been, um, attacking that problem continuously for, for years now. And we ask, we, when it comes to places where there's, um, contested jurisdiction or the, the jurisdiction is within the state, we, we will ask the, uh, the relevant state agencies to, to join us with these, um, whatever kind of, um, operations that we're doing. And we do do them. Um, we try to do them on a regular basis, I can't say every month, but we do, we do do them on a regular basis, so um, there are, there are operations like that that do take place. And of course, one of the most important things is we don't want to have some kind of accidental fire or anything like that get out of control, which would endanger, uh, the neighborhood. So those kind of, um, that's a added benefit to, to doing these kind of, um, these operations. So those operations are being, um, addressed, sir.
I appreciate that response, um, since I sort of like make a, a habit of like tracking what's happening here, I have not seen any kind of a police or fire response at all on Diamond Head Mountain for a good year and a half. Now, I'm, I'm sure that there have been isolated incidents where somebody has gone in there, but those encampments are pretty permanent. So of course, I've made it a habit myself, just at seventy-one, climbing up the side of the mountain and checking out what people had been there for a steady period of time. And I'm, I'm disturbed, so I want to bring that to your attention because I, I think that we're entering a very high temperature, hot, dry season, and that's going to be extraordinarily dangerous.
Well, I absolutely agree with you, sir. Um, we do these operations, we might take one day to give them a, a warning. And then we have to follow up with, um, maybe another day, we, we have another warning and then we'll do the actual operation, they might get cited, they might leave, they might get arrested, and, um, they might come back the next day. Um, all we can do is arrest and cite people and they come back, and it's extremely frustrating for, for, I can say for my, for, for ourselves, the Police Department, but, but also I'm sure it's frustrating for the community too. But, um,
I have great compassion for what we do. It's, it's terrible and you have to inventory all this stuff, I mean, it's a horrible operation. But honestly, it's like, if we don't get a control over the, the fire break area of Diamond Head, we're gonna have a Lahaina fire on a walkway in a very short period of time, it's really out of control. I just walked there today in anticipation of this meeting and overwhelmed. So if you could please bring that to the attention of the chief and say, could we like take a look at Diamond Head one more time? And clear these encampments out, that means dumpsters to get rid of this stuff, inventory stuff, put it in the warehouse. I know what this, I was head of homeless services in Long Beach, California, so I do understand how difficult this operation is. But high, dry, uh, brush underneath, terrible.
Robert, yeah, sorry, I'm gonna have to cut you a little bit short here, just cause of the, I'm, I'm on us up on the agenda tonight, so um, your point of vote taken, I think, with the Honolulu Fire Department, Robert, so thank, we really appreciate your comments on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, at this point, I do not see anybody else with hands raised, uh, regarding the Honolulu Fire Department. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We'll move on next to the Honolulu Police Department.
Hi, Lieutenant Tara Nakamura with the Honolulu Police Department. Um, these are stats for April as compared to the previous month. Uh, motor vehicle thefts were seven as compared to nine. Burglaries were two as compared to four. Uh, thefts in general were eleven as compared to six, and UEMVs, which is theft from autos, was five as compared to six. This is out of a total cause of service of six thousand two hundred and eighty-four for the district. And further statistical information can be found at honolupd.org. And our safety tip for the month, um, is we are getting into that, um, that hurricane season and with hurricanes, we have tsunamis, so we just wanted, I just wanted to, um, uh, make aware that we are into that, that, um, unstable season. And if you have, if, uh, if you have questions about tsunamis, there's, uh, good information that can be found at the Department of Emergency Management. And I'll put the, um, the email link in there, in the comments. And also, um, send the, uh, the pamphlet that I have in front of me, um, to, to the chair, yeah. But ma- most importantly, there's two, there's several types of, of warnings, and one is the watch. Um, the watch is the one where they're saying, uh, a tsunami or a, a, a dress, uh, a critical weather rent may occur. But the, the one you really need, so you need to get, be advised that something may happen if it's a watch. But if it's a tsunami warning, that means, um, the tsunami or the hurricane is occurring. And you need to follow the advice that's, that's, uh, being presented by the, uh, Department of Emergency Management. So just a heads up as to the difference between a watch and a warning, and that's our safety tip for the month.
Thank you very much. Uh, are there members of the board have any questions or comments regarding the Honolulu Police Department? I'm not seeing anybody, uh, Member Tong.
Yes, um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, um, on University Avenue and Metcalf, um, there was construction because of the YMCA building. And even as of now, even though it's supposed to be tollway on University Avenue, there are still cars parked where it's supposed to be tollway, um, until eight thirty. So as early as maybe quarter to eight, eight o'clock, there are cars parked on University Avenue because they're so used to last year where they were doing construction, they could park there. Um, have you looked into this? Because I have called a few times and they still continue to park there before eight thirty.
Okay, so what you're saying is on, if I remember correctly, that used to be my beat boa, that was like twenty years ago. So, uh, it's on the University Avenue, there is a AM tow zone from six thirty to eight thirty. Um, that's going Mackay-Bown. Is that the tow zone that you're, both ways? Okay.
And yet there are cars parked before eight thirty. They are there even before eight o'clock.
All right, um, yeah, what I can do is, if, well, what, what I can do is just double check that the signs are back up because, um, sometimes they, they don't go back up when there's construction, but, um, if they, they are, and if you see a car parked there in the tow zone, uh, just please call us and, um, um, we'll take care of it, we'll, we'll cite it.
Called a few times, but they still parked there before eight o'clock.
Okay.
Right. They, they really should not be parked there until eight thirty because, you know, we have so much children, you know, the parents.
Yeah, gotta get to work, get to school, I understand that. I'll also, um, just send a, an email out to the, the day watch lieutenant to, um, have their, uh, sector one guys. Check that.
Much appreciated.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, anybody else? Do not see any other hands raised from the members of the board or the community. So I believe that is all for now. Lieutenant, thank you very much.
Aloha, take care.
Oh, sorry, Elton, is that your hand raised? Elton?
Yeah, yes, Chair, sorry, I was muted. Chair, I have a request. At this time, I'd like to request that a couple of items be moved up to the agenda and placed right here. Number one, uh, is presentations, so that's under five A, the resolution, urging the creation of a comprehensive strategy. And, uh, five B, Aria Lane Residential Development Presentation. Would it be possible to move those up and discuss them at this time?
Uh.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, Robert, because, um, they're real important and they, they may take some time, yeah, we don't wanna squish it till the end of the meeting.
Um, uh, Chair Zane, uh, if you want to move something up, uh, we need to do a vote on that, and it needs a two-thirds vote, which needs twelve people. Um, I believe we do have twelve right at this moment. Okay, um, in which case, do we have a motion for it?
Yes, Chair, this is Dave, I would like to move, to move, um, the quote-unquote Aria Lane item up right now, and then following that, the, um, wildfire resolution item.
Before we move up Aria Lane, I'd like to confirm if the presenters are here. Are the presenters with the Aria Lane, um, development project? Which also should, uh, for everybody's awareness, this is also apparently the St. Francis School project. This is not made aware when we initially put this item on the agenda, because it was not mentioned on the request, but this is regarding St. Francis's school. Um, are the presenters here?
Hi, Chair Zane, I'm, I'm here, Isaiah Sato from Armentao, and I can lead the presentation on Aria Lane.
Great, thanks, Isaiah.
Yeah, thank you.
In which, um, in which case, we can, I can, um, humor the votes, um, I need a second from Dave.
Okay, uh, Christopher, second.
Chris, a second, um, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna do a roll call for just to, to make sure we have quorum first off. For any.
I don't think we need a vote to just move something.
No, no, Ellen, we didn't, when we, when we checked earlier, Ellen, when we checked earlier, that we didn't have quorum yet for the board. I'm gonna use this up, voting opportunity to check if we have quorum now. Cause previously we didn't have quorum, if we don't have quorum now, we can't go on to the resolution afterwards anyway, until we have quorum. So let's do a roll call vote now, so we can check to see if we have quorum.
Possible for me to comment on the motion.
Okay, um, Christopher has a comment.
Yes, I think, uh, not only is this an excellent motion for this evening, but I think we should in general do our agendas so that things that have a bunch of people here for come early and routine reports come late. I think that's one of the reasons why we keep running out of time, right? When we get to the point where there's some critical thing going on, cause we spent way too much time at the beginning of the meeting on, uh, routine reports. If we have our elected officials present, they should go early. And if we have things that we're gonna need to vote on, that a lot of citizens care about, that should come up early. And then all the rest of the stuff should be backloaded, and that way you wouldn't have to do a motion to change the agenda and take a two-thirds vote as, uh, the rule we have to limit. Or if we could just put those stuff that is clearly high priority in general upfront, I think that would be helpful. And I'll, I'll support your motion, I second it.
Really noted, appreciate the comment on that. Um, we'll try to, we'll try, uh, we'll try to get that mind with the agenda moving forward. In the meantime though, um, that still doesn't leave us with the question of, do we have quorum in the first place for, for tonight, uh, right now? So if we could please, um, have the, uh, roll call vote answered.
Okay, um, Zane?
Here.
Watson?
Here.
Bozol?
Here.
Nagaji?
Here.
Fukamoto?
Here.
Lumen? Lumen?
Here.
Okay, um, Lee?
Here.
Koff?
Here.
Tong? Tong?
Here.
Uh, Tong.
Oh. Oh, Tom, he's saying Tom, not cops, not, so.
He's saying Chong.
Oh, Chong, Diane?
Here.
Moilen?
Here.
Guano?
Here.
Okay, Fox?
Here.
And Miss Shreky is here.
Here.
Okay, yeah, we can um, yeah, we have quorum.
Perfect, okay, so we'll move on then to item five B, taking the agenda out of order for the um Aria Lane Development Project.
Oh, we uh we didn't vote on it yet, um, did?
I believe that was um member Nagaji's motion and uh. Then that we seconded it and we did a roll call vote and the and the roll call vote was approved, so now it's going on to five B.
Okay. Okay, then I think that'll be fine then.
Thank you. Isaiah, the floor is yours. If you have a presentation to share the screen, please do so at this time. And later on, if you could also forward that agenda to Anson, um, Anson Wu, who is our neighborhood coordinator. Because we would like to have this on our records inside of our Google shared drive.
Okay, thank you, Chair Zane. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, thank you for having me here today. So uh first off, my name is Isaiah Sato and I work at R M Tao Corporation. Where the agent or the planner for this project, so we're working with the developer. Um and helping them with their entitlement. So just right off the bat, this is the first uh public meeting that we had on this project and the first intro. To the community there, so we're excited to get out here um to listen to you guys and to hear some of your feedback on the project. Um I I wanted to mention too, we're gonna have a separate project information next week, Wednesday, and I have info on that meeting on a slide. Um, at the end of this presentation. But the project I'm talking about is Aria Lane Manoa.
Excuse me, Chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but really quick before the presentation starts. My understanding from an email yesterday was that this is also gonna be presented. At the June Neighborhood Board Meeting, is that true?
Boy, I requested it, but first um uh as Ellen, this, first of all, um, you weren't recognized. Second of all, we'll get to that after the presentation to hear to for any comments in the community regarding this matter, including future plans regarding this item. So if you could please be patient, we appreciate that.
Okay, it's an issue about notice as you as you know, so.
And we will get to that later, Ellen.
Thank you.
Isaiah, please go ahead and continue.
Okay, thank you, Chair Zane. So the applicant is S F Manoa Owner LLC, which is the Avalon Group. Um in this case, and they're proposing to develop a residential development that's comprised of one hundred two single family and multifamily units. They're gonna have parking on site, active recreational um spaces on site as well. And the entitlement process that they're going through is the plan development housing or the P D H. Um permit process there and it's a permit with the city and county of Honolulu D P P, Department of Planning and Permitting there. Um, for location map, I know you guys are all familiar with this area as Manoa residents, but just to orient yourself. Um, let me put my pointer. So that University Ave up here, U H Manoa, a mid path. And then our project is at the um Old Saint Francis School property there. This is a little bit more info on our project sites. Our project site is located at twenty seven oh seven and twenty seven fifteen Pomoa Road. The lot itself is pretty large, eleven point one two acres or around four hundred eighty thousand square feet. Um, it's zoned in R seven point five, which is um residential, so. R seven point five is intended to support residential development with a lot size generally around seventy five hundred square feet per lot. This is the same zoning as all of the residential single family homes in the um broader community as well too. And also wanted to mention um Saint Francis School and their last year, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, they had about four hundred fifty students. Um and sixty eight faculty and staff members there. This is another view of the site kinda on the um mountain ridge side of the um of the property there. Just to get oriented again, you have U H on two sites, they're on the south side and the west side of the project site. On the east side, directly east is the um Manoa Stream with Manoa Hillside Estates. Um, right there on that side, and the access to the project site is off Pomoa Road. In this image, it's in the um lower right hand side there. Here. Okay, so for project overview, so um the developer, the applicant is proposing to develop one hundred and two residential units. And that's gonna be made up of seventy six single family units and twenty six multifamily units. Um throughout the site, we're providing recreational space, which includes bike, uh bike walk and jogging path as well as active. Recreational parks at about forty five thousand square feet. And lastly, on the site, there's actually an existing Newman Center. Some of you guys might be familiar with it, but. It's about fifty eight hundred square feet and it's an existing Catholic ministry that's targeting the U H students, faculty. Um and staff over there, and that's at the U H side of the site. It's actually facing towards U H, but we're gonna keep that building um there to remain. I also wanted to share kind of as a comparison, the U H faculty housing in Manoa is about a hundred seventy units, so. We're about seventy units less than that project. This is our conceptual site plan, so to get oriented here as well, it's U H. On the left side of the screen, on the top side, Pomoa Road, access is in the upper right corner. And Manoa Stream would be at the bottom of this page as well. Um, but essentially, we're using Pomoa Road as our main access, and again, a primary portion of our site. Is gonna be the seventy six single family units. In the upper left is that existing Newman Center, just there, and we. Um are gonna retain that building as well as um on the right side is where we have our twenty six uh multifamily units there. So that's a little cool, it's there's two existing buildings and we're gonna retain those buildings and and redevelop it with multifamily. Okay, so this next slide shows us single family dwellings there, and again, it's gonna be new one and two story dwellings um with parking. We have sixty four three bedroom units um and twelve four bedroom units. And there's gonna be an option to convert one of those bedrooms to an A D U, so instead of a three bedroom, it could become a two bedroom and a A D U there as well. The three bedrooms are gonna be about a thousand to twelve hundred square feet and the twelve four bedrooms are about sixteen hundred square feet, so. Where um anticipating these lots to be, you know, to fit in with the community, with the character and the size. Uh of some of the um units in the area there as well. This is a clip of our multifamily unit here too, so it's twenty six multifamily units. This one is gonna be an adaptive reuse of existing administrative and classroom buildings, which is building one hundred and two hundred. It's gonna be one studio, but primarily two bedroom, twenty five two bedrooms there. At the bottom of this page, we have two images of the existing buildings. Um building one hundred is on the left side and building two hundred is, this is kind of the courtyard and building two hundred there too, so. Um, we're gonna be gutting these buildings and then uh reusing it there too. And I also wanted to mention that a portion of these units will be designated as affordable within the city's um affordable housing roles there. Okay, this next slide shows a clip of the Newman Center, which again is at um on our. Um slide is the upper left corner, which is right at U H. Um the edge of U H there and it's existing Catholic ministry that targets students, faculty and staff at U H Manoa. And we're planning on retaining this center um there as well. And this image at the bottom is actually from the U H side of the project, so you can kinda see it's very open, um really aimed towards the U H campus. Okay, so this next slide shows a a little bit of info on on our traffic analysis. And one thing that um we've kind of been hearing from the community is concerns about impacts to traffic. So as a comparison, we kinda did two things on, for this slide, there's a lot of information, but on the left side is our project and on the right side is a. Um if it went back to a school use, but kinda starting on the right side. What our traffic engineer looked at was they looked at two peak hours, peak hours, excuse me, the AMP car which is seven thirty to eight thirty. And the afternoon peak hour, which is four forty five to five forty five. And with that AMP car, our study for one hundred two units shows. Um about sixty three trips total, it's gonna be sixteen going towards the site and forty seven away from the site. And then the afternoon peak hour had fifty three entering the site and thirty one leaving the site at eighty four units there. So on the right side, we we compared it to a four hundred twenty student school, which is smaller than what Saint Francis was. Um, but we just wanted to have something as the comparison, so you know, just so you guys know, the site is still approved for a school. Um and could always potentially go back to the school there, but um. If you compare the traffic in a school to the residential in the AMP car, at least in that seven thirty to eight thirty window. We're anticipating the trips of a four hundred twenty student school to be at three hundred thirty three, so it's significantly more traffic in that. Um peak hour for a school there as well. The P M P car, so this is the, we use the same P M peak as what would be the P M peak in a residential development. But the school's P M peak is actually a little bit earlier when schools get out, and sometimes it's a little more spread out, but. In this situation with that P M P at four forty five to five forty five, we um saw seventy two. Um, trips generated from a school of similar size. Okay, this next slide um talks about the level of service. So one of the things that our traffic studies was look at is what they call LOS or Level of Service. At nearby intersections, so we looked at three intersections in the community, that's. Um, these three list listed on here at the left, so the way they grade intersections is kinda like how they grade. Um, you grade in school, it's like an A through an F essentially, so. Um, what we looked at was the year twenty twenty seven, which is when the. Um, well, we looked at two things, we looked at the existing conditions and then we looked at the year twenty twenty seven, which is when we anticipate the project would be. Built out there and within that year, we looked at two situations, twenty twenty seven without our project. Um, and twenty twenty seven with our project there. And what what our traffic engineer found out is the level of service stayed the same. Um, throughout those three situations, the existing situation, the twenty twenty seven without project and the twenty twenty seven with the project. We retain the same um level of service or I guess in grade in this situation. This is the second to last slide, but I just wanted to explain our uh P D H, P D H process there. So what we're at now is this first phase, phase where we're doing the pre-application work, so we're meeting with D P P. And we're doing our um initial meetings with the neighborhood and the community meetings there and getting feedback um from you guys. And while we're working on this, um we'll pull a lot of that information into our conceptual plans and into our application itself, which is. Kind of the next step where we work on our conceptual drawings, plans, we finalize all of our studies. So we study the um sewer capacity, the water availability, the traffic. Um, we look at the historic architecture and archaeology, so we do all of our supporting studies and pull that together for a report. Um, we look at the plans and policies in place, the primary urban center development plan and other city and state plans there as well as the. Excuse me, public services and physical environment there. And then what happens next is we submit it to D P P and D P P, um in their review time, they have a public hearing as well. As well as they review our project and go out to other um agencies to get comments there too. And this last slide before I'm gonna open up to questions is um just the project information meeting I mentioned, so. We scheduled a meeting next week, Wednesday, it's gonna be at six P M at Manoa Elementary Cafeteria, so I hope that you guys can all join. Um there and I, this next slide or this last slide, um I have my email there too, so if you guys have any questions. Or you wanna reach out for a, you know, calendar invite for the meeting or meeting information, just feel free to reach out and let me know. But I'm here for any questions, thank you.
Thank you very much. First off, members of the board, members of the board have any questions? Member Nagaji?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, so I'm not sure if um Azia's already aware of this, but. There was a bit of a transparency issue that that us in the board saw because we were C C on some emails between uh Chair Zane and a community member. Uh that being. Um, this is listed as Aria Lane rather than um Saint Francis School, which didn't uh give people as much notice as they probably should have gotten about what was going on. And during the email exchange, it came out that um. In the correspondence that Chair Zane received, the product was referred to as Aria Lane and didn't specify that it was referring to the um. Saint Francis grounds, so is there a reason why the correspondence Chair Zane didn't explain this was Saint Francis?
Oh, thank you for that question. So when I said um our request to present to the meeting to Chair Zane. I I attached the location map with some address and some info. I wasn't explicitly hiding that we're in Saint Francis. But I was focused on our, I guess, the future proposed development, but uh apologies for any confusion with with that info.
Uh, let's see, uh member Chong.
Yes, um, can you tell us what is the street that's going to um the former. Saint Francis um school? What's, what street is it?
Pomoa Road.
Okay, um, the other thing I have a question on is um, you were saying that you were having. Uh, three bedroom. And what was the other one, two bedrooms? But you also said that you might cut it down to some type of just a smaller unit? Is that it, or what was?
Yeah, so I I can explain that. So these seventy six um single family units, they're either gonna be. Or excuse me, sixty four of them are gonna be three bedrooms and there's twelve of them that are slated to be four bedrooms. What we're doing is we're allowing an option to do an A D U or an accessory dwelling unit. So instead of a three bedroom, it would be like a two bedroom and like a, like an A D U or like a granny flat. So if your parents, you know, wanna move in with you, you could stay in the two bedroom part and have a separate unit for your parents to live in. And I don't know, have a kitchen um there and therefore um bedroom in there as well, so but the. I guess the amount of bedrooms would be the same, so it's the same size unit, um it's just converting that one bed into like uh um A D U.
But isn't that encouraging more people to to go into us? Into a smaller unit so then they can have a a house in Manoa? I'm I'm worried about more traffic coming in because you're encouraging them to um make it an A D U, which is another family.
That that's a great question. I think the intent would be um. At least from my opinion, the intent would to to help, you know, if you wanna live with your parents, like I just mentioned, if you're older. And your son graduated college, they can have a little bit of their own privacy, have their own entrance and they don't need to be tied to the main house. The same, it'll be the same amount of square footage, but that's a good point. Thank you.
More question?
Oh. Uh, okay, um. Before, I have a question actually as well. Um, speaking of traffic concerns. Um, are there plans to also expand or work with the city and county on improving the roads leading to uh Pomoa Road? Um, the lane that's going through the residential area going towards Saint Francis has been very narrow and. That's also tends to become a bottleneck, it could become a bottleneck, and so I just wanted to know if there are plans from the developer to also. Improve the utilities and the infrastructure around this planned development site.
That's a great question, Chair Zane, and that actually reminded me, I didn't mention the parking on site, so we're planning on having. Um, about a little bit over, I think, three hundred stalls on site, so that's gonna include um. Visitor stalls and it's gonna be about three stalls per single family house there too. So where we wanted to make sure that we provided adequate parking on site so that the residents from the property don't. You know, end up parking on the neighboring streets, so we really wanted to make sure that there was enough guest stalls, visitor stalls and residential parking on site there as well. Um regarding the neighboring streets, that's something that we're gonna be working with the city. Um to determine if they believe it's necessary, so. Um our traffic study, once we, you know, finish it and then submit it to the city, it get, it gets reviewed by. D P P Traffic Review Branch, and I also believe the Department of Transportation Services and our traffic engineer will work with them to. Determine if they feel that any improvements to the nearby streets are required.
Uh, thank you, and actually a member of the community asked in the chat, who is your uh traffic engineer?
Our traffic engineer for this one is Wilson Okumoto Corporation.
Thank you. Um, right, I'm going to, members of the board, uh member Lee had his hand raised first, I believe.
Yeah, I had a same concern as David Nagachi about the misleading title of having area lane instead of mentioning it was a St. Francis School project. And I think it's not, I think it's a serious enough error that because the public has the right to know what's going on on the agenda. So they can come to the neighborhood board and voice their concerns. And so I think I'd like to make a motion to postpone this until next month so that the proper notice can be given. Thank you.
I, before we, before we ask for a second, I'd like to say that I did ask Arm Tower to also make a presentation again at the June meeting because that way we can also make sure it's properly labeled as a St. Francis project. And I think it's still relevant for us to hear and get some concerns out now. So that way we have multiple opportunities to speak with the develop, with Arm Tower and possibly Avalon Group if they're able to attend next month's meeting as well. Um, so that way we can have multiple opportunities and give the community as much opportunity to speak and have their comments raised about this issue. And maybe we would consider based on today's conversations, resolutions or some other actions that the board may want to consider at the next meeting, which is why I would prefer we continue with this conversation. And then also in addition, have a June meeting as well on this subject. Was there anyone who wants to second Member Lee's motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by a member Watson. Um, do we have?
Can we discuss before the, can we discuss before the vote or no?
Of course, we can't discuss before the vote. And this is going to over, and currently it's going to override the current discussion. Postpone the current discussion. So we would end this, if we, if the motion's approved, we end discussion on this matter here and then we're going to and then we're going to have to see if Arm Tower is going to be at the next board meeting.
Well, how about Phil? As long as we can discuss it at this meeting and they agree to come and present at the June meeting, is that okay with you, Phil?
It's nobody's motion is.
Yes, that's okay. Yeah, so then withdraw the motion if Towel agrees to come and present in June. So Isaac, are you agreeing?
Isaiah.
Isaiah?
Yeah, I can present at the June Neighborhood Board.
So there'll be the same basic presentation so other people from the community can come and weigh in, yeah?
Yeah, and we'll also have the presentation at our meeting next week, Wednesday. We wanted to have
I think so. It's good, but I think you should call it St. Francis School grounds property, not just give it your fancy name. So the community knows what the meeting is that you're going to host next weekend or next Wednesday. And maybe you can do a public service announcement or the news or news channels will mention it or something. But they, you have to connect it to St. Francis School. Or people aren't going to know what you're talking about. They aren't even going to know where Aria Lane is. I think there's no Aria Lane in Manoa anywhere. So anyway, I think you need to do that. And maybe you can can in the future talk to Towel and add something to the name or put St. Francis School property in parentheses on everything that you send out and be really transparent about it because the community and, and even we as board members missed that. So you know, we need you to step up. But anyway, so Phil, you're withdrawing it, the motion? Yes. Okay.
Motion's withdrawn. I'll move back to, to calling out people's questions. Member Kowano.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question. I know you said there is some affordable housing unit there, primarily in a multi unit building. And are you using it? Is it going to be a privately funded project or is that going to be some type of public financing from PCC that you folks are planning for?
Yeah, so we're planning on privately funding this, affordable housing.
Okay, thanks.
Wait. Uh, next, Member Bozel.
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of quick questions. Isaiah, have you been working on the conceptual plans for these yourself?
No, so we're, we're the planner, the architect, got design partners is helping us with the site plan for that project, yeah, for the project.
Okay. Um, and do you know if they have been to the location at multiple times of the day and accessed the site from you know, the sort of the upper and the lower streets?
I believe that they have. Yes.
Okay. Um, I would say that's very prudent, but I'd also say that, you know, the people who are involved in the actual design of this project, it would be useful if they were here to hear the community input rather than getting it filtered through you or maybe like watching it later. That just doesn't make sense to me. Because there's always going to be translation. So to have, you know, to have the people who are working on the design not be here to get the community's input is starting things off on the wrong foot. I would echo a lot of people, you know, there's been chatter about this already from the community. This is very high interest for the community because it's in such a sensitive location in terms of the access points. And the, I don't think it was necessarily nefarious, but I do think that you are a little bit, you know, starting on a back foot here with the fact that people don't know about this. A second quick question is, in what ways have you advertised this meeting on the eighth so far, apart from announcing it right now?
So we so the, okay, we'll go back. So before the neighborhood board meeting, we, we emailed the neighbors that were directly touching. So we emailed all, I mean, not emailed, we sent the letter to Manoa Hillside Estates and then the properties that are I guess directly adjacent.
Immediately adjacent.
Yeah, immediately adjacent as well.
Three properties.
Yeah, for the neighborhood board, yeah. And then for the eighth, we're planning on doing some mailers for that as well, as well as telling the council member and the area representatives as well too. And if anyone is interested and can send me and I can share the information with them as well.
Okay, um, if you're planning on mailers and it's May 1st and it's happening on the eighth and they haven't gone out yet, that's not going to give people very much time to plan their own lives around coming to this meeting. Again, this is very high interest. So my general counsel at this time would be if you actually want the community to accept this, you need to really engage with people and think through all the ways in, in properly engaging people. And it's going to
C. Capital T, F, S, P, P, E, R, T.
Uh, let's see.
I don't know what's happening.
And anybody who's not talking at this time, if you could please mute your mics.
T, E, G, I.
There we go. Okay, sorry. That should fix it.
Okay, um, so really quick to wrap up and I might have another question later, but yeah, would be to it's clear this is going to, any development is going to affect more than the immediately adjacent neighbors, like three people who share a property line. And so mailing it to more people with adequate time for them to plan their own lives around being able to attend a meeting, I think is only respectful and fair. So that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Apology, Chair, forgot, I forgot to ask a question. Um, would that be an EA assessment being done on this project?
Yeah, thank you. No, thank you for that question. So we're not doing an EA or an EIS for the project. It's going to be privately funded. So we don't have any triggers for an EIS.
Okay, so there's no requirement for you to do one and you folks are not.
Yeah, there's no requirement.
Um, Ellen?
Oh, first I was, I spent
No, Ellen Watson.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hey, thank you. Um, I have a real concern about you allowing some of your two bedroom units to be, or three bedroom units, houses to become a two bedroom with an ADU. I think that's really humbugging and you should not do that. And the reason why is because whoever buys that three bedroom house or the two bedroom house with the ADU will turn around and run out the ADU and will just have more congestion and more people in there and, and just drive up the rental prices. So I think it is a really terrible idea for you to do that. And it's just like you're being like the cheerleader for putting ADUs in residential neighborhoods, you know, which Senate Bill 3202 is trying to do anyway, and the community is trying to fight that. So I certainly think we do not want that in Manoa, but I think it's a real problem because you're just going to increase the number of people, increase the number of cars in there and, and just exacerbate the problem. And I'm just really concerned about traffic in general. And I'm really concerned about even Manoa Marketplace. There's no parking now without your development. Let alone everybody running to the grocery store there. And actually, I think you should just sell the property to UH. And UH was really dumb not to buy it when it was for sale. So maybe UH can just talk to Avalon and do this one lifetime opportunity and buy the property and do, do something productive with the university with it and not have housing piled up in Manoa. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks for your comments on that, Member Watson. Member Nagachi?
Uh, thank you, Chair. But quick question for Isaiah and then a quick question for the chair as well. So first, um, Isaiah. So earlier you said the name of the the people you hired to be the, um, the traffic engineer. Was that also the same people who did the traffic study or was that someone else?
That was the, they did the traffic study.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. And Chair Zane, I just had a question since we're asking them to come back in June to give the presentation again. I remember last year we had our recess in June. So do we not have June recess? Just refresh my memory on that.
That is a very good question. I believe it, um, I'm not sure when we voted on it, but we've also had it in July as well. All the decisions going on, Anthony, if you maybe can double check to see when we've, when the recess is and we can actually consider, we may want to consider moving the recess to July instead of June, considering this issue as well as the time sensitiveness of it and the interest in the community on this matter. Um, so I'll, I'll ask Asen to double check when our recess is on that. In the meantime, I'm going to call on, um, member, uh, members of the community. So Laura, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, you know, a number of things. First of all, Aria Lane, as somebody mentioned, does not exist. Anything that is a street name has to be a Hawaiian name at this particular point. I do not think that that is a Hawaiian word. Somebody might look it up. Uh, second of all, I know that UH did bid on this property and was outbid by, now I understand, now it's the Towel Group. Did, how much did the Towel Group interface with UH? Because UH needs a property. They need it for research. They need it for housing. They need it for other kinds of educational purposes. And this would seem to be that you're taking, you're making a community that really will not be connected with UH in any particular way. Second or third or whatever. Adaptive reuse, you're doing it with two buildings. Why not do it with all the buildings? Third, why don't you make it workforce housing? Or why don't you make it affordable rentals that would be keyed into staff on the UH campus? As you know, UH and many other of the, of the DOE campuses always had teacher cottages or other, or staff cottages. This would have been truly a community project that could have been done. Also, it looked like your, your path along Manoa Stream kind of goes and stops. What interfaces have you set up with the existing UH property and the property more Malca? I think that's probably all the questions I have for right now. Thank you.
Um, okay, I will, if I, I don't know if there's a response, Isaiah, we're going to respond to any of those comments?
Yeah, um, that was a lot of comments. I took some notes in that, but
If I could say just one more thing, I used to park on Pomoa Road and that was because the street signs said that you cannot park there during the school coming in and exiting. And now with the not being a school anymore, they'll pull out those signs and they'll be parking from the, for the UH students and everybody else all along there all the time. That's going to be another congestion that I don't think you'll want to deal with. Thank you. Sorry, forgot to mention.
That was a comment.
Yeah, thank you, Laura, for those questions. I wanted to respond to a few of the earlier questions too, but Whitney, I was able to confirm and the architect is online and he has been to the site many times. So he's been listening to the call as well. And for the additional meetings, we can do additional meetings there too. So we'll plan on doing that aside from next week, Wednesday on the eighth and coming back to the June or if it's recessed, the July Neighborhood Board Meeting. We'll plan on having another community meeting as well to there for the ownership. So just wanted to clarify that we're the planner on the project entitlement planner. So we're not the developer. Arm Tower didn't specifically purchase the lot there as well. And for some of the remaining questions, I got some notes down and we'll work on responding it, responding to them at the next meeting.
Uh, thank you very much. Ellen?
Thank you. I'm, uh, I have a question for Isaiah, just a clarification. You, can you be more specific? I thought you said that you provided a map to Chair Zane when you asked to be put on the agenda for tonight's meeting? Is that what you said?
Yeah, so I provided just a cover letter with the request and then a small info sheet that had a map of the site and had UH mid-pack on it and talked about the 100 or so units.
Okay, so, so apparently you thought that the map made it clear where the so-called Aria Lane was located?
Yeah, no, I appreciate this comment. And I think a lot of the other members were confused there too. So I apologize if there's any confusion. You know, the, just the, the standard is we always look at the future development in the site. We don't always have in the title the, the previous use of the site. And the school's been closed for four or five years. So we kind of were looking forward there, but I understand that St. Francis is really important to the community and really well known. So we'll work on getting that info clearly indicated on the future meetings and discussions. So I appreciate that comment from everyone.
Yeah, thank you. And I don't want to grind this point into the ground, but I think it's really important to, you know, I pointed out to Chair Zane in my email yesterday that he has a responsibility to do his due diligence if he's not sure about something as major as this as to what the significance of so-called Aria Lane is to clarify it before he puts it on the agenda. And he gave me the impression that he didn't know what Aria Lane was when he put it on the agenda. So, and yet you're saying that you did provide a map. So I, that makes me very uneasy as a community member that the Chair of our Neighborhood Board would be that you know, would exercise that love, not exercise any level of due diligence about something so important.
Well, that's fair of those comments. That's fair of those comments. And you know what, Ellen, I understand your concerns. Well, that's fair of those comments. That's fair of those comments. And you know what, Ellen, I understand your concerns about that. And the thing about it also is that um with the, with these requests or presentations, they do come up. And usually we wanna especially have developers present on these issues. We're um, when they're trying to talk about a special project and give the community the opportunity to hear what they have to say, which is what tonight was about. Now, the fact that was St. Francis wasn't mentioned on the map and we've met, and we've, we've talked about this already at length. So we appreciate Isaiah's comments about that. And it'll be on the agenda next month to mention that specifically with the former St. Francis site. Now.
And I wanted to apologize to um for that. We'll, we'll, we'll work on making sure that's clear to you, um Chair Zain and to everyone else.
And then I wanted to also uh follow up on Whitney Bozal's comments on first about having the architect or designer or planner or whatever the terminology is present for the meeting. So that if people have specific questions about layout, uh preservation of existing trees, uh, things that have to do specifically with design, building height and so forth, that there'll be somebody there that can actually uh answer those questions. Is that possible? And who is the, what is the architectural firm that's involved?
Yeah, so design partners um is the architectural firm. And we did do a tree study for the area and um, we'll be ready to answer them at our future meetings.
Okay, thank you. And then as Whitney also pointed out, even if you send out a mailer tomorrow, it's probably not gonna give people, it won't give people adequate notice for a meeting on May eighth. So does it still make sense to have the meeting on May eighth? Or would it be more reasonable to postpone it till later in the month and possibly have it on a Saturday instead of on a weekday? So that people might have an easier time to attend?
Let me circle back with um our development team. That's a, a great point. Um, and if you guys are okay to it, then I can, right when we decide, I can mention it to Chair Zain if he's able to distribute. Um, if we reschedule that, just to make sure that if we do reschedule, you know, nobody's there at that time. I just wanna um make sure that's okay.
Okay, thank you. And that just, I don't know whether Saturday or a weekday is actually better for most people, but may, maybe, maybe a weekday is better because of baseball or whatever else is going on on the weekend.
You know, uh, you know, actually thinking about a little more, we'll hold the eighth meeting and we'll keep it there, but we'll plan on having additional ones after that. How about we do that?
Okay, sounds good.
Um, Tom Bennett.
Hi Isaiah, I have a couple of questions for you. Uh, is there a timeframe for the development?
Do you guys have something mapped? Yeah, well, in our traffic study, we're showing twenty twenty-seven as completion, but um, you know, for the current process, I mean, if, you know, everything goes forward. Um, with the current plan, the DPP review is gonna be three, four months there. And then we need to work on our building plans and construction. So it'll be a few years. Um, it'll be a bit till we start and then a few years till it's constructed.
Okay. And as you've seen from today's meeting, obviously the people in Manoa are very concerned about having input in projects. As the planner for the project, are you willing to commit to taking whatever time is necessary to engage with the community to make sure that their input is received and addressed?
Yeah, I mean, so that's why we're having a meeting next week. We'll look at another community meeting and we'll come back to the next Neighborhood Board.
Great. And um, with respect to the project site, were there other alternatives that were considered but rejected that you can share with the community?
I'll have to talk to the developer um to get more info on that. That's a good question though.
Okay. And then do you know if the owner has targeted selling prices for the homes or multifamily units within the project?
That's another one I'll, I'll bring back to the developer to check.
Okay. You said that you also, uh, I think in answering questions to Ellen Sofia, you mentioned that there was a tree study done for the site? Would that be something that you folks might be able to bring to any public meetings that you have with the community?
Yeah, we can plan for that. So we get Steve Nims to do a full assessment of all of the trees on site um there as well. So we'll plan to be prepared with that info.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, uh, I see Member Lumen's hand raised.
Oh, Chair, Chair, point of order, you're, you've uh been skipping Member Moylan over there.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. Member Moylan. Um, Anthony?
Okay, am I on?
Yes, you're on. Go ahead. Sorry about that.
Since we're well on our way to running short of time again, I won't be long about this, but I think someone should say that the long chain of emails accusing our Chair of deliberately withholding information or gross malfeasance uh that was repeated again tonight, I think is unworthy of anyone. People who serve on this board volunteer to do that because they care about having the citizens of this neighborhood understand what's going on and helping facilitate that process. And no one in this board would be sitting there saying, let's see, how can I, you know, conceal something from the public? I mean, that presumption of ill will is completely invalid and I hope I never see it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
That was not by a board member though, yeah? You understand.
Right, right, yes. I'm talking about the member of the public in the chain of emails.
Uh, Member, uh, Member Lumen.
Uh, hi, this is Member Lumen and I'm sorry I can't get my camera to work. But uh personally, I know those streets. I've ridden my bikes, bike in there and uh I think it's a horrific, horrible proposal, a horrible plan. And I intend to do everything I can to stop it. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Lumen. Uh, let's see, anybody else with hands raised at this time? Does anybody else have any comments for Isaiah? Oh, um, Ellen Sofia?
Thank you. I just wanna mention that I live from, I don't live in an adjoining property, but I live uh right next to an adjoining property. And um, there is a huge amount of foot traffic uh both uh back and forth to UH of faculty, students that uh park their cars elsewhere in the valley or walk from their homes to the campus. And they all, they all access the campus through uh so-called Aria Lane, which is actually Palmoa Road. I'm just wondering, uh, is there, is that route still gonna be open for, for pedestrian traffic?
So with our um project site, we're, we're not limiting any pedestrian traffic. We're actually planning on allowing pedestrians to cut through the UH um side of the property from Palmoa Road down to um the university. But that, I guess the final connection with, with UH would have to be agreed upon with UH. But we're planning on um allowing pedestrian access there.
Okay, and then one other quick question. Several years ago, when I was trying to save about thirteen trees from being cut down on the Noalani campus, I found out um sort of after the fact actually that there was discussion behind the scenes about building a new fire department for Manoa on the Malka uh portion of the Noalani campus that uh an open field currently. Uh, and there were various reasons given at the time why we might need a bigger fire department. Is it possible that we might need a bigger fire department if this project is built?
Yeah, that's a great question. And um during the DPP's review, they do route it to the fire department just to get any comments um from there. And but we don't anticipate needing any new fire infrastructure with the one hundred and two units.
Thank you.
Member Watson?
Thank you. Um, at, at your June presentation, can you bring along with you the developer? And maybe somebody from the architect so that they can answer the specific questions that you cannot answer? Um, and we'd like to be able to hear from the developer. Um, that would be nice, yeah? So Robert, are we, we're having our meeting in June and we're recessing for July? Is that true?
Uh, Anthony, do you have an answer for that? Uh, for the recesses in June?
Yeah, so I checked and yeah, you're for recess in June. But you can make a motion right now to change that date. It's fine. To July, it's okay. Do we have a motion for that?
I'd like to make a motion that we don't. Oh.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we don't take a recess in June. I'd actually suggest we just don't take two recesses this year, if that's allowed. We don't have to recess two months, do we?
No, we don't. We want to, but what we need the motion for is to not.
I'd like to ma, to make a motion that we do not recess in June.
This is the other second.
I'm gonna, I'm second by Ellen Watson.
Second by Ellen Watson, okay.
We'll go by unanimous consent. Is there anybody opposed to this motion to um, to not have the recess in June? Hearing and seeing none, we will be meeting in June. That, uh, we'll make that announcement later on tonight. The next meeting will be on June fifth. Um, Member Bolso, I believe you had your hand raised still on this matter?
I do, thank you Chair. Isaiah, two more questions, quick questions for you. Um, you said that the, you know, what, developer, uh, you as the planner, whatever, everybody involved is happy to engage the community, et cetera, et cetera. But I assume that work towards finalizing the plans, work towards getting meetings regarding permitting will continue apace during that process. So we don't really, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so we don't wanna um, I think, slow down any meetings. We wanna have, you know, I, I would say just, Ellen, this is a reason why uh, I think we wanna have the, the May, or the, sorry, the, yeah, May eighth meeting, even if we have more later. But we wanna get as much information out as possible because they're not gonna be stopping work, pausing work during this period. And this goes to Member um Lee's point as well. Um, another quick question is, do you have a population estimate, especially considering all the number, like how many ADUs you're considering? I, I think it's set, was that, I don't know if you could reshare the screen with some of your statistics on here in the meantime, but it was like seventy-six uh homes. All of those could potentially be adding an ADU. Is that correct? And.
Yeah, so this is our um slide we talked about. So it's seventy-six single family. Again, there's still twenty-six multifamily um in this other building there, but um.
And the multifamily, or, did you already say this? Sorry, did, are the multifamily um two-bedroom units or what? Two-bedroom units? Okay, so I'm just wondering, bring up the um traffic study again, please, if you wouldn't mind? Can you share your screen again or, or whatever?
It's, it's being shared now.
I'm not seeing it.
Really? Okay, cuz I, I'm seeing the screen on, on the share screen on my, uh, Whitney, so.
Okay, I think it was something like thirteen trips out at the peak hours being estimated. Is that correct?
Uh, PM peak is thirty, so.
AM peak, exit.
I can walk, yeah, I can walk through this, Whitney. Just verbally. So the AM peak is where we, our engineer gauge was seven thirty to eight, eight thirty. They look at one hour time slots for AM and PM peak. So they had sixteen entering, which is going to back towards the site, right? And they had forty-seven people exiting the site. So this was again their peak hour. They anticipate people leaving, you know, throughout the full morning from five to nine. But that's just the.
Do you have a population estimate, taking into the account how many people you think will be adding ADUs? An adult population estimate, not children. But considering that there are seventy-six units, all of which are potentially allowed an ADU. So two adults for every home potentially, or let's, you know, call it one point six plus, let's say forty-five people take up the option of an ADU, plus how many twenty-something in the multifamily units?
Twenty-six.
Okay, so what are we at? Like a hundred and twenty here of potential adults?
Oh, yeah.
At least?
We'll look in, we'll look into that. But just for the traffic study numbers, um, this is based off um standards. So I can talk to a traffic engineer and see if they can join the next one as well if we have more questions on that.
I would say if they can join the May eighth meeting, if you're having this May eighth meeting, at that meeting should be the developer, the architect, the planner and the traffic engineer. If you, if you want to have the full, you know, support of, of the community, I would say that having all those people at all the meetings is going to be useful. Um, but I would say also any other additional information that you can find for that meeting on the eighth would be useful. And a, a very basic one would be like adult population that is expected for this development.
Okay, thanks, Whitney.
So, because it's already almost eight thirty, we kinda play a while on this subject. I have a John T. and a, and a Dana Sineha, and they'll be our last two. One of the comment though, um, if you, before this meeting, there was also, I've been trying to get in contact with Avalon Group who initially reached out to present on this particular project and development. If you could ask Avalon Group to also join you for the June meeting, that would be greatly appreciated because again, no, I was initially trying to get in contact with them. I tried to contact them earlier this mo, um, this past month to follow up, see if they were gonna present. Then I got uh approached by Arm Tower about the Aria Lane and I put that on the agenda. And it wasn't clear that there was a connection between Arm Tower and Avalon Development. Cuz that was not mentioned in the two-page summary that I received. So if you could have Avalon also join you in June, that would be greatly appreciated. Um.
No, just thanks, Chair Zain.
Yeah, we should, Isaiah. Um, John?
Thank you very much. Isaiah, um, do you, assuming everything went well, do you have an idea of when you start to break ground on the campus?
I'll have to check on that. I, I would assume it wouldn't be till next year at the I would, I would assume mid next year at the earliest, but I'd have to confirm that.
Okay, thank you.
That's a very fast schedule too, yeah.
Right. Um, I was also a little bit concerned about the, the estimates of the traffic that was assumed for St. Francis because um I was wondering if it took into consideration that a lot of the students walked from uh Woodlawn around the back of Noalani School. And also there was the access point, which I believe was open during um school hours, and that was the fire lane down through UH. So, and then of course, students being bussed in as well. So you know, I, I never saw that much traffic going through um Palmoa Road. And certainly um, the, the street gets incredibly congested. I mean, if the, if the trash collection is going on, then you can be stuck up behind them for about twenty minutes. And if there's cars going in both directions, then there's gonna be, you know, an awful traffic jam. So would, would you be thinking of um asking the city to make that street uh a no parking zone? Currently, it's, it's being used by US, UH students. And they, they fill the parking up very early in the morning.
That's a, that's a great question um there for the, so what I'm hearing is you, you personally would pre, prefer if it was no parking both sides of the street?
I, I honestly, I don't think the, the road infrastructure will support that. I honestly, I don't think the the road infrastructure will support that number of cars that that it sounds like you'll have there. If you've got 330 car parks, and if even you've got a third or, you know, you know, a sixth of the cars going along Pamaa Road at a particular time, then there's no way a single lane is going to be able to take that. But then also, there's the problems with the intersections. And I would imagine that you'd need to have lights on university, because that intersection there is almost impossible to get out of. If you've got a huge volume of traffic, it's just not going to work.
Appreciate those comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Dana Sineha.
Hi, um, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Dana Sineha. I'm a third-generation resident on Pamaa Road. So I've grown up on Pamaa Road, and I would echo what what John said prior, that when St. Francis School was in session, a lot of the students would walk to school. They would catch the bus and they would be walking. And so I don't, growing up on the street, I don't recall there being the amount of traffic. So I saw someone ask in the comments if your traffic study was done using estimates or actual counts, because living on Pamaa Road, it doesn't seem like that, it seems that we see more cars than just 16 going out at a given time in the morning. And I also put a, sorry, to add on to this, I put a comment in the chat with concerns, not just about traffic once the residences are built, but how the developer plans to mitigate construction traffic during the construction phase, because it seems it, it seems like that would be quite a heavy that that would be very taxing on the street, on the infrastructure, and a lot of traffic in and out with the heavy equipment. So very concerning.
No, those are great questions there. So for, just to clarify, you know, the trip generation numbers that we showed for the project, those are trips for the project itself, not, not the existing trips. That's the trips generated from the project. There for the school numbers, those are projected future numbers. So the site is zoned to allow a school, I mean, as they've had a school in the past. So the last St. Francis closed, I believe in 2019, right? So we got some past counts in the site of the current conditions today. But the school projections was a, was an alternative projection to residential property there. And the last question on construction traffic, so we with the traffic engineers, we always come up with a construction management plan, which is something we work with the city on to get that approved. But that plan kind of details the construction mitigation, where they're going to have their vehicles, making sure they don't have their vehicles parked on the public street, those kind of things.
Um, sorry, and just to follow up, I know some of my neighbors have also posted, but on the street, we already have some existing safety concerns with traffic, particularly at the intersection of Alalawam, Pamaa Road, where those properties have actually had to erect walls, because there have been so many accidents on that corner. And I think for many of us who live in the area, it's just a concern. I have two young kids that I already am concerned about them playing, you know, in the front yard, because cars, so many cars come speeding down the street. And so I just wanted to raise that concern for the families that live on the street, that increasing the traffic, I think raises some serious safety concerns for those of us in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'm seeing a whole bunch of more people wanting to comment on this. A lot more people wanting to comment on this. It is 8:34. We also have a lot more other items on the agenda. Unfortunately, because of the time constraints, I'm going to have to cut it short at this point, because we have other major issues on the agenda as well. Please, I encourage you to put your comments in the chat. Isaiah, I would also ask that you keep on with us and keep reading the comments and the members of the community that are coming in into the chat on WebX. Do that way, you can, you can take note of those and hopefully respond back to those members of the community at the May 8th meeting, as well as the upcoming meeting in June.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Zane. I just wanted to end with saying thanks for allowing me to present today. And we'll be up at the next Neighborhood Board meeting. I just got off with the, the developer just messaged me that we'll plan on hosting another meeting on the 16th as well. So we'll look at Manoa Elementary on the 8th and the 16th, both at 6:00 PM. So that's another meeting that hopefully people can join and attend and provide comments there as well. But thank you, everyone.
Thank you. And as at this time, also, there was also a request to move item 5B, that's currently on the agenda to move forward, which is the Resolution Regarding the Creation of a Comprehensive Strategy to Prevent and Mitigate Catastrophic Wildfires in Manoa Valley. At this point-
That's 5A.
Oh, I'm sorry, was that 5B?
5B was the Oriole.
Thank you for correcting me on that one. So yes, 5A. Item 5A on the agenda. So if Member Nagaji and Member Fukamoto can speak on this resolution, as well as put up on, share the screen if possible?
Oh, yes, Chair. I'd like to make the motion to consider and discuss this agenda item if we can get a second.
Do we have a second?
Well, this is Member Fukamoto. I'll second that.
Uh, motion second by Member Fukamoto. It will be, we will now discuss it at this time.
All right, Anson, are you able to put the-
Chair, just a really quick note that Board of Water Supply is having to leave now. So just the only option for us to hear that in person.
Well, thank you. I think I did see Dominic's comment on that. And it looks like he is dropping off at this time. Dominic, are you still around?
I am. It said there wasn't much of a report, so I emailed it to you if you want to read it to the group at a later time. That's fine. There wasn't nothing significant in there, so you can move on with your agenda items.
I appreciate the update on that, Dominic. And yes, it will be put up onto the Google Drive for the Manoa Neighborhood Board for this month's meeting. So that way, the board and members of the community can look at that. We'll return back now to item 5A on the agenda.
All right. Thank you, Chair. Anson, are you able to pull the resolution document up?
Uh, I didn't, I didn't receive any resolution. Or did you email it to me yet at four?
I emailed it to you on Thursday and asked you to circulate to members of the board. So did members of the board not receive it?
Oh, maybe I didn't see it fully, so I'm sorry. But you can still present it now. You, I, it wasn't from that, resolutions do not really have to be posted up. So you can just present it now. That's okay.
Okay, I guess I'll pull it up. But yeah, this resolution was co-drafted by myself and Member Fukamoto. So I'll just go through the reso. I think the the where section is a pretty good job of explaining our reasoning. So I'll just go into that without preamble, and then we can see if people want to discuss or amend it. So one second. All right, can you all see my screen?
Yes.
All right. So I'll go ahead and read through it. Resolution urging the creation of a comprehensive strategy to prevent and mitigate catastrophic wildfires in Manoa Valley for Manoa Neighborhood Board Number 7 on the 1st of 24. Whereas the threat of catastrophic wildfires is increasing due to warmer ocean temperatures, which in turn will cause longer and more severe droughts to hit areas of the state of Hoi. And whereas in August of 2023, a series of wildfires devastated the town of Lahaina on Maui, resulting in the loss of at least 101 lives, destroying 2,200 structures and causing an estimated $5.5 billion in damage. And whereas although the cause of the Lahaina wildfires has yet to be officially determined, contributing factors included poor or inadequate maintenance of brush surrounding utility poles, high dry winds without accompanying rain showers, down sparkling power lines, a failure to use the existing civil defense siren system to alert residents of the fire, and the absence of key individuals at the Maui Emergency Management Center. And whereas one analysis of the wildfires and their causes concluded that even if the management resources had been where they should have been, the emergency management system then in place would still have been overwhelmed by the size of the task confronting it, and that in order to properly respond to wildfires of the same or larger size, the emergency management centers need substantially more personnel and better coordination with all sectors of government. And whereas the Manoa Valley has witnessed multiple brush fires in recent years on Waheela Ridge, which is adjacent to Manoa. And whereas during a recent high-wind event, a utility pole was blown over on Manoa Road by the especially strong winds which frequently occur on that road. And whereas Manoa Valley has only two major routes which allow vehicles to enter or leave, those routes being Manoa Road and University Avenue, which lead into the valley at points adjacent to Pono School and the University of Hoi at Manoa respectively. And whereas Mid-Pacific Institute, Pono School, and the University of Hoi at Manoa each have streets running through their property, which could be used for egress from the Manoa Valley in the event of an emergency. And whereas Manoa Valley District Park could serve as a sea harbor for vehicles if the grounds were suitably maintained. And whereas there does not currently exist a clear plan for Manoa Valley residents and businesses to evacuate from the valley in the event of a catastrophic wildfire or other disaster. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city and county of Honolulu's Department of Emergency Management should work with the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency, the Honolulu Police Department, Manoa Valley's area legislators, any other necessary government entities, and private property owners in Manoa Valley who have potential roots of egress from the valley running through their property for the purpose of developing a strategy to, one, prevent catastrophic wildfires in Manoa Valley through proper maintenance of infrastructure and brush areas so as to reduce fire risk. And two, be prepared to safely evacuate residents and businesses from Manoa Valley in the event of such a wildfire. And be it resolved that the city and county of Honolulu's Department of Emergency Management should disseminate information about such an evacuation plan to the residents and businesses of Manoa Valley. Be it further, and, excuse me, and be it further resolved that the governor must work with the state legislature and their partners, the county governments, to come up with a comprehensive strategy to address the threat of catastrophic wildfires by instituting some or all of the following measures. One, requiring that power lines in new subdivisions be buried rather than strung above ground on utility poles. Two, requiring that neighborhoods in high-risk areas move their existing power lines underground if they are not there already. Three, requiring that power companies establish a policy of turning off power during high-wind events in neighborhoods with power lines on utility poles. Four, establishing a substantially more fully-staffed emergency management agency, one sufficient to address the threat forecast rather than remaining satisfied with the current agency which is designed to fail. Five, funding such an augmented agency. And six, coordinating with public and private property owners to properly maintain wilderness areas to reduce fire risk. And be it finally resolved that copies of this resolution be transmitted to the governor of the state of Hawaii, each member of the Hawaii State Legislature, the administrator of the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency, the mayor of the city and county of Honolulu, each council member of the city and county of Honolulu, the director of the Department of Emergency Management of the city and county of Honolulu, the chief of the Honolulu Police Department, the president of Mid-Pacific Institute, the president of Pono School, the president of the University of Hoi at Manoa, and each member of the University of Hoi Systems Board of Regents. So that's the full text of the resolution. A lot of stuff made it in, some ideas were mine somewhere. Elton's, we ended up kind of combining it into, as Elton put it, an omnibus resolution. So I can keep it on the screen or I can take it out if you want me to. Just let me know what to do, Chair.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, let's see, do we have members of the community who have any comments regarding this? Or, sorry, there was the board. There was the board of any comments or suggestions regarding the text of the resolution? Uh, Member Koff?
Yes, I think that it, it really there are a lot of things now that you're recommending. And it's, it's a bit confusing that on the one hand, what you're saying is that you, you really want the agencies to work together to get a plan, and then that you go on to specify a lot of elements of the plan. And I'm not sure what your purpose was in doing it that way. And it just sort of, I'm not sure what we're asking the officials to do. It seems like the section that requiring all of the specifics of it is something that they would determine the agencies themselves and working what the priorities were in these areas. We could just loosely identify areas. But even so, we might be missing the important ones, because we don't, we're not experts in fire prevention, really. Just what we've read and what seems reasonable to us. I don't know. So I just want your comment on it. Thank you.
Uh, Member Nagaji, may I take that?
Oh, yes, Member Fukamoto, please take that question.
Okay. Thank you, Member Koff. Yes, I called this a, an omnibus resolution, because it really does two things. Number one, we need a comprehensive strategy. So everyone needs to get together, the state government and the county governments, and they need to do more work on planning for a long-range, a long-range strategy. And that would include having a larger emergency management system and doing the things, those six things in that larger paragraph. But in addition to that, they can begin to have, begin to plan for an evacuation of Manoa in the case of a wildfire. And some of the earlier discussion we had today indicates that some, that some members of this board are concerned about the coming dry season. And that dry season will continue to get drier and drier. As we know, rainfall is going down. And so this will be even more of an issue. But what we need is we need for the police department, for the HFD and the HPD to plan together to somehow figure out a way of evacuating thousands of people who live in the valley and who need to go out those two exits, Pono Ho Street and University Avenue. How to successfully evacuate those people in the event of an emergency. Once those sirens sound and thousands of people are trying to get out of the valley, we need a plan right now. So this resolution focuses on one immediate problem that can be tackled now, but also wants to have our elected officials plan for the future in a large, in a large-term comprehensive strategy. Thank you, Joan.
Thank you very much. Member Watson?
Thank you, Chair. Would you feel better if before, in the resolution, the paragraph be further resolved, and then it lists the six items? In the following measures, comma, such as? Would you feel better if the word such as, requiring the power lines be buried and whatever, would that help you? Yes, I would. I would, yeah. Yeah. So just, just, can you add that in there?
Well, Chair?
Yes?
Quick, can I respond to that? So the, the language already says respond to the threat of wildfires by instituting some or all of the following measures. So there's, there are six there. Some or all, that that pretty much takes care of it.
Okay. I, I think that's true. What is the title of this document?
The title of this document, yeah. Urging the creation of a comprehensive strategy to prevent and mitigate, prevent and mitigate catastrophic wildfires in Manoa Valley.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, so I'm okay with that then, Joan. How about you?
Okay, thank you. Anyway, so I'm okay with that then, Joan. How about you?
Member Koff?
My concern was that by enumerating any of it. You present yourself as an expert in what these things are supposed to be, you know what I mean? Like, uh, requiring the power lines and new subdivisions be buried rather than that, you know, having. High-risk, it is, it sounds very good, you know what I mean, it's not that, um. And that, uh, they're already.
Okay, thi- this, this resolution doesn't say that we're experts. These are some solutions that have been suggested in the press and so forth. These are just some of the, a- and they've also been done in California. A- and so we're just listing them, we, we're not the experts, that's for sure. We want the government to be thinking about this problem proactively, not waiting for, uh. Another disaster to happen and then having, having to clean up the result. We want them to think about this before the next disaster happens.
Um, if I, if I may, maybe what Joan's point is like, think for example, on the current screen share. Be it further resolved that the governor must work, instead of the word must. Um, speaking, instead of saying that you have to do this, say more like should work with the state legislature. And making similar changes throughout the rest of the resolution. Is that your point, Joe?
Yes, um, that, that's certainly one of my points that. That it's really a suggestion that they work to get the best resolve of what is the best. Actually, what is the most useful plan, you know, for Manoa, our particular neighborhood. But also for other neighborhoods which might not be the same plan for different neighborhoods, you know, um. That, for example, when we spoke to our fire department guy here, just this evening, we, we, uh. Maintain wilderness and how to reduce the fire risk. In different levels of, of grasslands, he was really very non-committal about what we could do and, um. I'm not sure, well. I, I don't know that, I don't, in other words, I don't know that the list is a good list, frankly, it, it's either inclusive. Or, you know, it gives them an out and said, well, we did everything on your list and it still burnt down. And then the point will be raised, well, what did they know that they wrote this list of ten? It could have been a hundred things. Or only three things that are the most important things. You know what, that's all that I'm saying here.
No, I, I agree.
I, I take them all out.
And that's why, Elton, maybe you can just, um, take by instituting some of the following measures. Why don't you just say, for example, or such as, and take that out.
Yes.
So, not so demanding like you, you have to institute these measures, because you're so smart, yeah.
Exactly right.
And soften it. So I, I agree with Joan, that we still need, maybe just take that. Sentence out the threat of catastrophic wildfires. You know, such as, or for example, and then you have your six examples, yeah? I, I think that's softer.
Yes, we have no, uh, not being in the business, we have absolutely no idea. Uh, what the most important thing for them to be doing, cost-effective and so on, and whether, really, honestly.
Yeah, well.
Yes, so turning with the power grid might be actually the most important thing that's being done, you know, for all we know.
So, so, um, Ellen, if, if you can suggest. Specific language, then, then we'll, we'll think about it, but.
Okay, so somebody can strike this or type it, can you do that, Dave?
Yep, I got it.
Okay, so.
Yes.
To address the threat of catastrophic wildfires. Comma or semicolon, for example.
If you do track change in the.
For example, and then let this, and take out the following measures stuff. Example, and then strike this out, take out by instituting. No, leave the for example in there.
Yeah, no, Ellen, hold on for a second.
Color the text. So, so red is being taken out, blue is being added.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. And that way it's a little softer. And it's, these are the kind of measures you might want to do, yeah? And I think that's better because we don't sound like big know-it-alls, yeah?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, and you might want to, uh, as you were suggesting, replace the must with should.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Dave, do you, do you see that?
Yeah.
Yeah, right there.
Right. Should work with, yeah.
Okay, I, I, I'm okay with that.
Alright, I'm also good with it, so can we consider that a friendly amendment?
Yes. Right.
Um, can you scroll up and see if there's any other language in the be it further resolved paragraphs or if there's similar language? Uh, let's, the one about that's okay, be it resolved. Okay, that seems like the only paragraph that had like the must and the, uh, very strong language in there. Okay? Uh, let's see, um. You remember the community with its hand raised, Mr. Ron Brown, did you have a comment regarding this particular resolution? Brown, are you still there? And if I don't hear from you, I'm gonna, and if this is not regarding this particular resolution, I'm gonna lower your hand at this time on the WebEx. So that way it'll show that it's, that it's not, it's not an issue at this point. Uh, does any other members of the board have any comments regarding the amended resolution? I am not hearing or seeing any hands raised. Regarding this, um, Asan, is your hand raised over there?
Yep, uh, uh, Moylan.
Sorry, Member Moylan, I, sorry, the, the screen's not showing, not showing that, um, you had your hand raised, please, please go ahead.
Hey, that's okay, you, you're spinning a lot of plates. Uh, the only comment I would have is that. The, uh, resolution and the proposed amendments are all very thoughtful. But I think if we made better use of the Google Drive, we wouldn't have to do wordsmithing during our meetings, which I think would probably be a better idea. If it went around and we could all look at it, have suggested changes and stuff, and then we could just wrap it up when we got to the meeting, we could get to this good place quicker. Just a suggestion, I certainly support the resolution.
Well, thank you, um.
Yeah, Chair, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, the, uh, resolution I thought was circulated, but, uh, you know, we have had issues in the past with, uh, things slipping through the cracks administratively. So next time I'll make sure we get confirmation receipt before the, um, before the end of previous week.
Yeah, and, um, what were the also, sometimes like with regarding these discussions, they do have to be. Out of the open for sunshine law purposes, so, um, quite understandable, um, and usually because. And how this works out, it's thanks to also be able to discuss this in person, so that members of the community can also have a chance to see this and also make comments. Appreciate your thoughts on that and hopefully can streamline it in the future. We have.
Oh wait, actually, um, I'd just like to mention Chair Zane, it's me, Asan. Um, everyone on the board can edit the Google Drive, so if you want to add something to it, you, you can. I'm just pointing that out, you guys can do that now. Uh, we gave access to all board members.
Oh, thank you, thank you for clarifying that. Um, moving back on to this particular item, are there any other comments or suggestions regarding the resolution? If not, we'll move, proceed then to, uh, approving the amended resolution. Do I have a motion for that?
Make a motion that we approve the amended resolution.
Grab a second.
This is Dave by second.
Second by Member, um, Fukamoto. Um, to the motion I seconded, uh, unanimous, we'll go by unanimous consent. Is there anybody who is opposed to approving the amended resolution? Hearing, seeing no hands raised, the amended resolution is approved unanimously. And we would ask that, um, members Nagaji and Fukamoto revise the resolution to correct any. Minor changes and grammatical errors necessary.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much.
NCO tonight.
Perfect, appreciate the update on that, um, in which case, um, it is nine o'clock already. Um, there's also something else else on the agenda regarding our liquor license request, um. With the board's, uh, permission, I'm going to, um, move the agenda out of order to a- address this as well. I give the board the opportunity to comment on this. This, uh, this was also put in the shared driver as well, um, do members of the board have access to this? If not, let me see if I can do, uh, a shared screen on this matter. Um, but essentially, um, one of the board's things that, um, one of the board's, um, primary. Purpose that we could do is comment on requests for liquor licenses. Um, if you can be there for it, there's gonna be a lot more, um, up and coming restaurants. That are going to be at, um, Manoa Shopping Center, including, for example, um, this. Little Plum Restaurant, um, which was featured in the news recently. So, on this screen over here, if, if anybody can see, um. There's also, this is the request to Little Plum, from Little Plum Restaurant. Say that we'll be opening your stores to the general public as a full-service, Okaasi inspired lunch and dinner restaurant at Manoa Marketplace. And it'll be submitting applications for special liquor licenses, uh, to provide beer, wine, and cocktail services at their restaurant. Um, and they're hoping to begin test services as of this, as of today, actually, um. So, the board has an opportunity to actually comment on, um, liquor licenses. Um, to the appropriate committee, to the appropriate groups, um, I'm leaving this. As an opportunity for the board to make comments if they have any thoughts on the matter. Uh, Member Watson?
Thank you, thank you, Chair, I just think it's like a little restaurant that's gonna serve beer and wine and some cocktails, right? It's kind of like, um, you know, the Italian restaurant over there or anything, so I think it's okay, yeah.
Mm-hmm, actually, um, if memory serves, Paisano, which was at Manoa Marketplace, has closed. Um, and it'll, and another restaurant that's Mediterranean-themed will be, um, taking a spot as well. So, and then there's also going to be, um, this, this restaurant here and. Another, um, store featured, that was featured in, um, Prolic Hawaii, I believe. Regarding, uh, a general store that has like some bartending supplies and books, um, so. Again, this is an opportunity for the board, if they have any concerns about the application for liquor licenses, now it's time to raise those concerns. But I am not seeing any other comments or questions regarding that. And in which case, my only comments are, we're looking forward to the addition of brand-new services in Manoa Valley serving our residents. We wish these new services and these new businesses all the best in their endeavors and we hope that you serve us very tasty food and drink coming forward. Now, move back on to the, uh, regularly listed agenda, so. Uh, as previously mentioned, Dominic Diaz from the Border Water Supply had to leave at that point. Uh, do we still have a representative from Rick Balangiarri's office? I'm not hearing anything and, uh, I also wanted to see if, uh, either, uh, councilmember Say. Is Councilmember Say still with us?
Aloha, Chair Zane, this is Poor from Councilmember Say's office, um, so sorry, he, um, had to leave, um, the meeting, but I can, um. Give the report to you guys, um, the report basically is that I put all the newsletter and all the, uh, web, web. Um, sites for links in the chat and that, uh. Um, Councilmember Say did attend the Manoa Town Hall and listened to all the concerns of the community. And he's, um, taken it back to the office and we're working on any concerns in support of the mayor. If there's any questions or comments, then, um, I can take them back for you.
Great, thank you, um. Member Nagaji has his hand raised.
Uh, thanks, Chair, nothing for the current speaker, just wanted to let you know that you're, you were still, uh, sharing, which you took down, so that was all thanks.
And I did so, thank you for correcting me on that, um. So, do we have members of the community who have, uh, comments or questions for the mayor's office? Oh, sorry, that's Councilmember Say's, I'm sorry, I do apologize. Councilmember Say's office. I'm not seeing anything, so it looks like we're good for now. Thank you for coming on and for, oh, sorry, Member Bolso.
Thank you, Chair, um, does the city council, I know that SB thirty-two oh two passed today. Does the city council have a plan to try to fight this? Or no, do you know?
Um, I would have to take that back to council, um, to, to councilmember Say, and I can get a response back to you.
I know they, that council, um, that, uh. Chair Waters and, uh, councilmember Kiaina were very passionate about this, so. Yeah, I'd be curious to hear that, thank you.
Sure.
Um, yeah, you know my email, I guess, thank you.
Yeah, mm-hmm, thank you.
There was the community? I am not seeing any hands raised or comments at this time. Thank you so much, we really appreciate the time and we do apologize for, um, I think Councilmember Say was here earlier and. We appreciate his patience and your patience in this matter as well, um, regarding this, and hopefully the discussion about the, um. Upcoming development at St. Francis School site, uh, was very interesting to him.
Yes, um, yep, and then I'll stay on for the rest of the meeting if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, um, is Senator Fukunaga available or somebody from her office here? I'm not hearing anything, Representative Garrett, are you still on with us?
Uh, I am.
Please, thank you.
Chair members, uh, thank you for your time, uh, appreciate the robust discussion on the Aria Lane project earlier. And totally understand why you folks wanted to take that out of order, I think it made perfect sense to do so. Um, I know Member Bolso just mentioned Senate Bill thirty-two oh two, so we did have a marathon floor session today, we went on for. About seven and a half hours, we debated and voted on about a hundred and ninety bills today. Um, in case you're, you weren't aware, we're gonna adjourn on Friday, but, um. Unfortunately, Senate Bill thirty-two oh two, this is the urban development bill that would allow additional ADUs. On, in, uh, urban district, um, I'd have consistently voted no on this bill. Uh, gave a floor speech, um, in opposition to it today, but we did fall a little bit short, um. And then there was another bill though that we were able to kill that, um, that a lot of the committee was concerned about, and this is House Bill twenty-five sixty-three. This bill would have allowed the convention center to, um, uh, have, enter into a contract for naming rights for the facility. You know, I thought that would have set a terrible precedent, we obviously have very strong, um, anti-billboard laws in place, thanks to the outdoor circle and other groups. So we were able to recommit that bill, so I was happy to, um, that that happened, but, you know, I just did want to thank everyone, um. On the board and in the community who testified over the last, or submitted testimony and emails to the, to the body over the last few weeks. Um, I probably got three or four hundred emails alone on Senate Bill thirty-two oh two. I mean, my position was firm on that anyway, but, um, it was great to hear the community come up at the last second, let their voice be heard. Um, so yeah, thank you for all that activism there and advocacy. Um, just in terms of next steps for me, you know, I will be sending out an end-of-session newsletter, um, by the end of this month. Recapping, um, you know, major bills that we passed this year, um, I always do like to highlight, um, capital improvement projects and grants and aids. Um I always do like to highlight um capital improvement projects and grants and aids we were able to award. Um even though Roosevelt High School is not physically within District twenty-two, um we were able to salvage the funding that DOE wanted to lapse for the new music building there. So that we were able to um secure sixteen million dollars for Roosevelt High School to get a new music building. Um this is on the heels of them. Um you know, if you've driven down Nejua Road and Nejua Street, they have construction underway now for their new gymnasium, so this is another added plus for students or kids who live in Ma- uh Manoa Valley who go to Roosevelt High School, so really excited about that. Uh just another, a couple of other items here I wanted to mention too. Wanted to thank the city and county for bearing um the area of Manoa Street where it kind of meets uh below the streams down by Qualley Road. Um they were able to uh use some heavy equipment and clear a lot of the vegetation that was overgrown there. I know I heard a lot from Patty and her uh Kowano and her neighbors about their concern about the area being prone to flooding, so thank you city for doing that. I believe, um you know, I was told by uh Kim Sparland that um the crane that they used to clear the vegetation unfortunately uh is broken right now, but they are planning on sending a crew out to the Woodlawn Bridge area right by Long. So of course, everyone knows, you know, twenty years ago, this was basically ground zero for the flood flooding. Um I was with a group of students from Noialani Elementary not too long ago um to do some uh removal of invasive um the catfish that down, the plecos that are down there, and I was able to notice just the mouth underneath the bridges um been built back up with silt again. So um you know, the concern, of course, there is that continuing to build up and backing up in the next rain event, so the city has committed to sending a crew out there once they can get that crane fixed and hopefully they can clear that area as well, so uh just wanted to um again, thank the city for that and hopefully we can get that done soon. So I'll stop there knowing that it's past nine o'clock in us. I don't want to take up any more of your time, but happy to answer any questions as always.
Okay, thank you very much for your time regarding that. Uh let's see, uh member Watson, please go ahead.
Thank you Chair. Hey Andrew, so the thirty-two oh two passed with amendments, does that help save Manoa at all or?
Uh.
Still gonna have that built in our subdivision?
Yeah, so the the bill did pass with um the allowance for two uh ADUs per single family home. I think the worst part of the bill was taken out though, which was a good thing. This was a provision that would have allowed for subdivisions of lots down to two thousand square feet. I think that would have been really concerning, um but the fact that that was taken out, I think is a positive, but um again, as I said in my floor speech today, we know we don't have the adequate infrastructure to support this kind of, you know, additional density in our urban in the urban core. Um so we'll have to see. I mean, the proponents said that there's enough guardrails for the city and county through the Department of Planning and Permitting to continue to apply standards and whatnot, so you know, I think you raise a good question, member Watson. You know, I think it's really direct, better directed to the city and county and DPP how they plan to respond. And I think that's, you know, to the gist of what member Bosa was asking of a councilmember say staff.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh member Fukamoto.
Uh uh thank you Chair. Um and thank you Representative Garrett for sticking around because um you get to all uh to answer all the difficult questions that uh would have been answered by some of the other um government officials, but here's a difficult one.
Okay.
Uh so in the Aria Lane project, um the uh you the the University of Hawaii was apparently outbid by this this private developer. Um do you know whether at this point the state government could condemn this property by eminent domain and as a taking uh give uh or uh provide fair market value uh for the property and just take it over and really give it to the UHs? Is that a possibility?
Uh technically, it is a possibility. I would think that's a very remote possibility, though, and it can be, I mean, I think Elton, you're an attorney, right? I think anytime you, you know, you wanna um invoke eminent domain, it has to be for a a public purpose and a very clearly defined one. Um I mean, yeah, it was unfortunate that, you know, UH was essentially outbid. Um the the property, if I recall correctly, was the assessed value was about eighteen million. When the sisters put it on the market, they were wanting thirty million. I think eventually it closed for like twenty-three or twenty-four. And in any event, we couldn't have got it anyway, but in in theory, it could be done, but again, it's be a very tall order to invoke eminent domain um just to kind of stop what they're planning on doing right now.
Thank you.
Member Kowano.
Chair.
Patty.
Thank you Chair. I just want to say thank you for um entry for your work on the House Bill opposing it and also for helping clean up the Manoa Street.
Oh, you're very welcome. Thank you. Thank you, member Kowano.
Uh members of the community, so Ellen, Sophia, go ahead.
Uh I I just wanted to quickly comment that during a neighborhood meeting that um Representative Garrett attended where we discussed the proposed of development at St. Francis. Um we we had some brief discussion about the possibility of of a higher uh amount of uh allocation from the state uh or not that I think that I think what Representative Garrett's clarified was that there's a a maximum that the state can allocate for any UH capital improvement. Is that true of seventeen million? So we were short, you know, by whatever would have been needed to outcompete Avalon and uh but I think that part of the, you know, at that time, I remember only finding out that there was a bill for the allocation from the state after the bill was basically already dead. So there wasn't any opportunity for the community to weigh in and try to come up with creative solutions for public-private funding uh of a purchase of the property, and I'm wondering if that still might be possible.
No, um Avalon Development closed on the property, so they hold the the title in in um in full. Um when I introduced the bill, it was, the property was already in escrow with Avalon Development. Um it did take quite a um quite some time, though, for them to close on the property, so I just wanted to make sure that if the property did fall out of escrow for whatever reason, which has actually happened two or three times in the past, that the state or UH would be poised to just jump in and and be in a much stronger position to acquire the property, but um unfortunately, um you know, the the bill did pass the House, we sent it over to the Senate. But unfortunately, the higher education chair chose not to schedule the bill because she said it was already in escrow and she felt that it was gonna go through and didn't want to waste any more time on it, so um yeah, I don't think it was a matter of the community not being able to step up or come up with, you know, money to cover the delta between the assessed value and the asking price. I think at that point, the deal was pretty much close to being completed and in in hindsight, I guess the Senate was correct because the deal did close.
And were you in the, were you in the legislature when the when the property was first put on the market?
No, because the school closed in twenty nineteen, I believe. I was elected in twenty twenty-two.
And I know the property was on the market for a long time before it went into escrow, but anyway, it's uh Monday morning quarterbacking at this point.
Mm-hmm.
But I was thinking about Elton's uh question about uh the state and so forth, just wondering, you know, if Avalon sees enough barriers to this development, maybe by some miracle, they might be willing to consider selling to UH still if they got the right price for it. Would you support that?
So I'm so convinced that education is the highest and best use for the site. As I put in the chat box earlier, I mean, I my talks with UH officials, they had said if they were able to acquire the property, they would have basically closed off the Pamoah Road entrance and just used East West Center Road, which is under their jurisdiction and um yeah, there's a lot of different things they could have done there. Um you might have heard too that the Department of Education at one point was trying to acquire the property. And I know there were some discussions about, you know, the university lab school and other things too. Um but that's all kind of a mood point at this juncture, I guess. Um but yeah, I mean, if the entitlement processes not go well for Avalon and they run into a lot of community opposition, then it's possible they'll just say, you know what, let's just uh cut bait and see if we can recoup our investment. Um and you know, if we're in a position at that point to acquire it, I would love to revisit that issue. And we being the state, of course, not me personally.
One other question real quick, um do you agree with Isaiah's assessment that they do they do not need to and will not do and even an environmental assessment?
I'm not a land use planner by training, so I I can't comment on that. Um I know um you know, typically, well, it sounds like all the zoning is already in place. They're not, from what I heard earlier, they're not asking for any variances. That's usually the trigger for an EA or even an EIS. Like we're seeing like with um you know, other favorite project, Manoa Banyan Court. But yeah, uh from what I understand, if they're gonna um stick with their current zoning, which is um you know, R seven point five is what most of the lots are, they're abiding by it. Then it sounds like they're just gonna have to go through the Department of Planning and Permitting. I'm not even sure if the city council has to um approve it like they do for two oh one H projects, but um you know, the Avalon team did reach out to me, so I do have a meeting coming up with them in the next few days. So I'll be asking these kinds of questions because I I'm curious as to know, as to find out like um what the exact schedule and um the road ahead looks like for them.
I I'm not a land use expert either, but my understanding is there's fourteen triggers for um that environmental review process. So I guess it's would be really important to um understand what all those triggers are and make sure that none of them are pertinent to this project.
Okay, well Ellen, you have my email. If you don't mind sending me those um those fourteen points, I can try to bring it up with them and see if there are any triggers that might apply in this case, or I can ask around about that.
Specifically, I would say, is there is there a chance that they might down the line uh find that Pamoah Road needs to be widened?
Yeah, so that's all part of the entitlement process where they have a consultant review. Um and I know um Isaiah talked about the level of service and other standards. Um and I know a lot of the neighbors talked about how narrow the road is and, you know, how the street parking is always full. I can't imagine that they'll, you know, try to claw back property from residents along the the area to widen the road. Um but they might put restrictions where they don't allow any street parking at all. And we know, you know, most homes in Hawaii have more than two cars, so um this is all, you know, remains to be seen. They'll have to have the traffics um at uh and engineers do that assessment, and then anytime, you know, they do these assessments, they have to propose mitigation measures as well. Whether, you know, like a signal might be warranted upstream someplace in a different part that might be impacted, but again, it's too early to say. It'll all just be speculation at this point, so I think we just unfortunately have to let the process play out and see what they come up with.
I think that the traffic numbers need to be assessed by somebody independent of the developer.
Um yeah, I mean, I understand um why you would feel that way, but you know, these engineers have their own professional code of conduct as well, too. And they're gonna stand by their work and ultimately it's up to the the Department of Planning and Permitting to review what's proposed and to see whether it makes sense or not. But thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
Member Bosa.
Thank you Chair. Um Andrew, do you or Representative Garrett, do you know if um two-nine-one-nine passed?
Yes. Yep, so this is a Senate Senate Bill twenty-nine nineteen that um does allow the counties to rein in short-term rentals. So that passed uh today without a whole lot of debate, which was surprising. I mean, there were some people concerned about you know, this being a taking that people were being deprived of their property rights, but um and I know the governor said he'll sign it, so I'm happy that this passed uh with flying colors today. So we can try to get some control back. Yeah, well, thank you for the question, number Bosa.
Thank you, and thank you for all of your work on everything else.
Of course, thank you.
Okay, I am not seeing any other hands raised at this time. Representative Garrett, thank you for staying on with us and thank you so much for your patience. We really appreciate your work with everything and uh congratulations on finishing another finishing another session of the bench.
Yeah, no, no, thank you all for your support over my first term. Um you know, really honored to serve in this capacity and I assume I'll see many of you folks next week, Wednesday at the St. Francis Aria Lane presentation, so see you folks then. Take care.
Thank you. Do we have uh rep- uh representative from Governor Green's office still on board?
Yes, hi, I'm here.
Hi, go ahead.
Okay, um I'll try to make this quick, but um in April, the Green administration continued to make strides toward expanding healthcare, providing housing for those affected by the Maui wildfires and protecting our environment. Um and as we head into bill signing season, the state remains committed to Maui's recovery, increasing access to affordable housing, providing assistance to those experiencing homelessness, improving healthcare services and addressing the urgent need to combat climate change, and for more details, you can visit governor@hawaiit.gov. Um the other thing I wanted to mention was last month, I had um about the CIP release for the East West Center and the question came up about which um buildings there were for. So as an update, um I did um get more details about that. And the funds will be used to improve the safety and functionality of mission-critical spaces. So work includes, but it's not limited to um a condition assessment of all buildings, installation of handrails in the Japanese garden, modernization of elevators, replacement and upgrade of electronic lock key system, replacement of electrical transformer and switchgear, and some other improvements, so hopefully um that answers the question that came up last month. Uh but that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for Governor Green's representative from members of the board? Uh member Fukamoto. Elton? Elton?
Sorry, I was muted. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Um to the governor's representative, I'm sorry, I have to ask you this difficult question, but uh here it is. SB two-three-oh-three, is that the number? Two-three-oh-two? What what's the number?
Thirty-two-oh-two.
Thirty-two-oh-two. Does the governor intend to sign that bill?
Um I will have to go to the governor's office with that question and get back to you. Soon as soon as I find out, I will email the board chair. Um and yeah, like you know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh member Watson.
Hi, thank you. Um can you please tell the governor not to sign thirty-two-oh-two? At least on my behalf and probably on this board's behalf and Manoa's behalf. I know that he is 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 committed to wanting housing anywhere, everywhere, any kind, so he can just say that he created all this housing, but um we need him to use better judgment and not put this in our communities. And the 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 two-oh-one-H thirty-eight projects that have been coming up like Pahoah Ridge and the other one at Dole and and uh Wilder. I mean, you just can't plumb these everywhere without an EIS, without you know, without an EA and just give them a green light for these developers to do everything. I mean, we like to support Josh, but I really question his judgment uh on this. Um because he's just wanting, I I feel anymore, to add housing, no matter who it hurts or no matter whose subdivision it encroaches on and just pack the people in like stack sardines so that he can just achieve an objective that he stated. But we don't want that, and if he wants us to reelect him, he better not do that. And so I'm just saying, he needs to not sign thirty-two-oh-two the way it is. And there's nothing in there that says it'll be affordable anyway. It'll be completely unaffordable. And the new project um Aria Lane, those ADUs aren't gonna be priced for anybody in Hawaii. And everybody from the mainland or outside is gonna build those things, buy those things and rent those things out. So he's not doing anything to create affordable housing for what he wants to achieve. And I just say enough is enough and he needs to not sign it. So there you go.
I will definitely bring that back to the governor's office and the housing team.
Yeah, I second that.
Uh member Nagaji.
Uh thank you Chair. I just wanted to add to um member Watson's comment just now that um her comment is indeed made on behalf of our board because we did pass a resolution in March opposing that bill and its house companion, and we did include the governor, I believe. You know, our listed recipient. So in passing on Member Watson's, um, comments. To Governor Green, could you also remind him that we passed a resolution to this effect, uh, this past March? Thanks.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Tom.
I, I too want to reiterate that I don't think this will do anything this to solve our homelessness problem. These, these people are in no shape to afford any of these units that are being built. And the marginal people in the society who can barely afford their rent, they too will never qualify for the units. That are being considered right now in our area. And I, so I think the Pathora, his intentions are fine. But other methods have to be, uh, brought in to help the people of Hawaii with their housing, not this.
Thank you very much, um. Uh, Member of the Community, oh, sorry, Joe, did you have something else to say?
Oh, no, I'm fine.
Okay, uh, um, sorry, thank you. Member Moyland, yes, I see you, I see your hands raised.
Yeah, I was doing a dance over here. Um, along the lines of some of the other comments. Rather than always find ourselves in reactive mode. To some ideas someone else has come up with. How to deal with the big gap between housing demand and housing supply in the city. Perhaps what we and I would say other neighborhood boards ought to do is say, okay. If it's up to us, what would we do in Manoa? That would help mitigate that problem? If new housing should go in, where should it go in? If there's some other thing that should be done, where should be done? Maybe we could be part of the solution instead of always finding ourselves playing defense against things like, hey, let's just. Upzone everybody's neighborhood, you know, uh, if we could say, hey, we know the neighborhood well. We think here's a place where we could, at least in our neighborhood, contribute to mitigating that gap between supply and demand. That might be the type of thing you might want to appoint a subcommittee to work on on their own. But that way we wouldn't always be kind of in the position of Vols going, well. We don't like your idea and we don't like your idea and we don't like your idea. Like, maybe we should have our own ideas, right? Because we're supposed to be the experts in this neighborhood and to see what we could do to mitigate that problem. Just a suggestion.
Thank you very much for your comments on that. Uh, Member of the Community, Tom Benedict.
Uh, Ms. Goshi, I would like for you to communicate to the governor this concern. Uh, his platform and the thing that he, that matters the most to him is affordable housing. Senate Bill thirty two oh two has no guarantees that the, that the housing that will be built will be affordable. And by signing this particular bill, he is exposing himself to an argument that he is in fact in the pocket of developers and the construction industry. I would suggest that he take his hard look at whether or not this bill is actually. In alignment with his stated goals. That's all.
Thank you. I will take that back as well.
Thank you very much. Um, are there any other comments from the community regarding? Uh, to share with Governor Green's representative? I'm not seeing any additional comments. Thank you very much for your time tonight. Uh, next, do we still have Julia from Congressman Ed Case's office on? I don't see her, so move on. The filling of vacancies.
Uh. Chair, Chair, you missed on UH's some report.
Oh, is that? Oh, my gosh, I am so sorry. Is Elmer still here?
Uh, Chair, uh, Chair, if I may.
Yes, go ahead, Dave.
Uh, so Elmer signed off around nine oh two, but he left s- some informations. Said that, um. The UH president search is continuing. Uh, UH Manoa has its commencement on Saturday, May sixteenth. At, um, nine AM and another ceremony at three thirty PM. Uh, the last day of instruction, UH is May first twenty four, uh, twenty twenty four. And exams are on the sixth of this month, the tenth of this month. He also let us know that, um, there's a temporary emergency management services base station. Uh, they're setting up, um, yeah, it says UH and County of Honolulu's Emergency Services Department. H E S D are in the process of entering into a memorandum of agreement to collaborate with each other to. Provide improved emergency services coverage to the community and provide medical standby coverage at UH Manoa campus. UH will provide space within the campus, lower campus, to allow the H E S D to establish a temporary EMS. EMS base station and then, uh, then he signed off. So that was his report.
Thank you. And I believe, uh, memory service that was also approached by UH to present on that. Emergency Management Services Base Station at the meeting next, at the next meeting. So. Uh, we'll have that, I guess we'll have that presentation as well as the, uh, second presentation by the developers of the Saint Francis School Project. Uh, Patty?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I wanted to be on the record that I have planned to ask Alma about circling back to a request that I made years ago. That they composed events that are being held on lower campus so that residents. Uh, neighbors can be aware of games and graduation and to this day we still have not received anything. So I'm hoping he will be able to share some of that next month and I'm hoping his report, um, will not be missed next month because. You know, there are some important events that will affect the lower Manoa area as well. Thank you.
No, thank you. Um. Oh, um, okay. So actually, Elmer just messaged as well. He's watching, but he's having, uh, connection problems, so he's not. Able to join us or make that presentation himself apparently. Um, Whitney?
Oops, wait, did I just? Sorry, I wasn't sure if I was unmuted. Thank you, Chair. Um, I was looking for the email, but just to let folks know, I did reach out. To a number of people in various departments at UH about getting a, some plans or some like master planning presentations. And I did get a response and they were interested in, I, I suggested that we break it up into a couple of different meetings, perhaps thematically like. Buildings versus streets and traffic or landscaping, whatever, or. You know, upper campus and then lower campus because I think it'll be too much for one meeting, but they did, um, write back and say they could schedule the first one for June. So if we want to do that, we can, although I don't know, especially now that they're presenting on another specific upcoming topic. Whether, uh, you know, any of the board members feel like that's best put off till later since we have. The Aria Lane and these other UH projects. For next month, already slated. Because that'll be about, you know, two different ten to fifteen minute presentations that they'll do with, you know, discussion time afterwards, so. Um, again, just about any sort of upcoming near and mid range plans regarding the campus.
Okay. Appreciate the update on that.
In, including the lab school and that whole, um, like the PBS lot, whatever, you know, that, I don't remember what that lot is called, but that other. Uh, areas that folks have been interested in that was, um, slated to be included in sort of these discussions.
I think I saw Elmer briefly. Elmer, is your camera and mic working at least?
There he is.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thanks, Elmer.
Sorry about that. Thank you so much, Patty. I, I got your message and I'll get to you. Um. Whitney is correct. Um, she had coached our project delivery office and will. Hopefully to do the plan, um, presentation to the Manoa McCully. That we had, um, neighborhood boards of the overall conceptual. This is after in December. Um, on November of twenty twenty three, the city and county of Honolulu approved our PRU. And not adopt the RPU plan, which is that plan to upgrade our twenty nineteen long range development plan. Part of that resolution was to go out to the community to talk about overall master plan of the whole entire University of Hawaii. Yes, Inc. Area of, um, of, um, the lab school area, um. Area internally within, like, so yes, we are trying to do that correctly. Um. It's gonna be several, because it can be a lot. It can't be all at one time. There's gonna be a lot and. Whitney has led the charge in making sure there's a, a structure and making sure we can get that information out. So that it won't overwhelm you all. It can be overwhelming. Um, so with, with that in mind, um. Yes, we've tried to do that. The presentation we're asking for right now is that we do have an emergency situation regarding. Getting an EMS, um, downtown or, um, located within the, the Manoa area. Um, and so what's happening is that we are to need to create a EMS, some, um, temporary station. On lower campus and, but I'll get to more detail next month and we can get into more of that. Um. Going back to Patty's question, this is the new director. He hasn't really taken kindly to that, that request yet. So we have to work on it. I'm sorry about that. It's. Um, Craig is not the mountain, so we have to work on that. Um, but my report that I put in the chat is more informational, so. But thank you for the patience.
Appreciate the updates on that. Um, let's see, um, Member Chong.
Yes, um, I noticed that you do have a sign out for UH graduation. Um, can, can you put out a sign that tells us? When there is gonna be a major school graduation? Because I'm looking at the public school. Um, listing and we're talking seven graduations are happening next month in May. And we have no idea when they are. And I believe Punahoe is also gonna be graduating at Stan Sheriff. Is there some way you can tell us when these graduations are happening? So we know to avoid that area other than just UH?
Sure. Um, he gave me a few minutes. I'll look that up. Are we, or after our graduation, the next. Weeks, um, will be having graduation on campus ranging from. On Millie Lundy, Rosa Bell. Um, I'll try to get that out to you as soon as possible. I'll send it to the. Chair. Hopefully, I don't, I can get it right now, my laptop, so.
I mean, it's not.
Yes, we are in a bush.
It's just the days that we should avoid, um, that area because of, uh, because of the traffic.
Yeah, I, I get it.
Thank you.
But I will. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Member Nagachi.
Uh, thanks, Chair. Uh, sorry, Elmer, for seeing you to sign off. I saw the thing you put in the chat and I thought that you were, uh, leaving us till, uh, till next month, but. But, um, I just wanted to ask, uh, as you may be aware, last, uh, month, we, we considered and eventually decided to not vote on. A resolution regarding, um, the Laos who area and potential, um, developments in that area. And we decided not to vote on that largely because we, we, we heard a lot of rumors and there was some speculation, but we didn't have any, um. Hard facts or any reports from anyone on what exactly the situation is. So. Did you have any information you could share with us on the university's plans for the, uh, lab school, um, potentially? Repurposing the area by the university or developing that area? Is, is anything like that in the works? Are you able to speak on that at all for us?
Oh, we. PRU have to, like, going back to Whitney's, um, request to us is to get more of a master plan. That is what we're doing. Before we do, we have to go to the community. We have no. Plans for that area. Um, and before we, we have to have our series of our. Only with the Manoa area, that you mean, um, our neighbors in that area, the Mc- uh, McCully Mo'ee area. So, no, I don't have an ultimate plan yet. Hopefully by next month when. We do a presentation, I can provide that to you. But thank you for that question. It, it is, it is out there. I know that there is a discussion. But we have no ultimate plans yet for that.
Okay, thanks. And, um, just, uh, Chair, if, if I may, as, as a quick follow up to that. Since, uh, from, from what you're seeing, it sounds like you're still, um, talking to community and soliciting people's opinions before coming up with the, with a clear plan. I just want to, uh, drop a friendly reminder that, uh, a year ago during March of, uh, twenty twenty three, our board did pass a resolution. Regarding the, uh, University Labs will urging the University of Hawaii to allow a ULS to. Uh, remain at its current site for the long term and to give a, a written agreement to that effect. So I do hope that you'll, um, consider that as a. As a one expression of some community sentiment on the issue as you're forming your long term plan. Thanks.
Here, I was there. Noted. Thank you.
Uh, let's see, uh, Member Kawana, did you have something else to say about this?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, just really quick. Alma, if you can send me a list, um, when you get a chance to the upcoming graduation in the email, in, if you can include myself and I can. Share that with the neighborhood. That's, that'll be great. Thank you.
I'll, I'll do that with all the emails I have. Yes.
Uh, let's see, uh, Member Bosso. You're muted again.
Thank you, sorry. Um, Anson, are you there as well?
Yes, I'm here.
Did you, did you see the email? I, I don't remember if you were copied or just, um, Mr. Yonanaka, but. Regarding UH being the host for our upcoming in person. Meetings, UH was worried about liability. Did, did you see that? I'm afraid, I don't know how much, you know, Mr. Yonanaka has to deal with and whether that's gonna cross his radar in a timely fashion.
Yeah, I've been told that we, due to the fact that, uh, I believe. Cleanup and trying to find a custodian, we cannot be, we're unable to have. The, you, the Manoa Board meetings at UH.
The cleanup and.
Yes, I think that's. Or I believe custodian as well. Get a custodian and a cleanup over there will be hard.
So, I, I guess, my question is, what does the neighborhood commission do for other neighborhood boards? Where are they meeting where they are not required? I don't, I'm just wondering how anybody else is meeting these requirements. If every location is gonna have issues with liability and that's not covered by the NCO or these other things, like how. It seems, um, an impossible bar to meet.
Oh, actually, uh, we, my, uh, my, the higher ups actually suggest the Manoa District Park. That one's okay to have it there.
Outside in the park?
Uh, no, yeah, there's an inside gymnasium, I believe, where one of the, the rooms over there.
I thought there were connectivity issues with the wifi, so we couldn't have, uh. There were issues with wifi connectivity there. That was one of the reasons why we couldn't have it at the gym.
Isn't the gym part of the school or is there a separate gym that's part of the park system?
That I'm not too sure because, um, that's what, uh, my boss suggests to board.
If, I mean, I, I'm just wondering if we. Tried out at UH and found that we weren't producing trash, if we made it a requirement that nobody, you know, tried to bring. Absolutely nobody attempt to throw anything away during a meeting. Um, you know, would, would it be possible to start doing this? Does the NCO at least provide the insurance so that UH is not trying to look at the li- their liability for this or?
That, sorry, I'm not too sure about.
Okay, so. I guess I'd like to request that, uh, to me, it seems like UH is one of the most viables, uh, options that has come up so far. And they're so integral to the community. I'd like to have this discussion between you as our, you know, liaison. Mr. Yonanaka, Elmer, or whoever else at UH might, because I, I hate to just drop this so soon. So, so maybe we can all discuss this further over email. But I, uh, as timekeeper, I will also note that we only have ten minutes left in the meeting, so I will drop it for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, oh, yeah, Moyland has a question about labs.
Sorry, I'm killing your camera. Um, and to follow up on that, what we heard from Elmer was, uh, you can't have it at UH because of, uh, liability and cost, but we're open for community groups. And so then my question back, which has not been answered yet, and I think, uh, hopefully Vice Chair's suggestion that this can be continued over email is, okay, what do the community groups have to do to meet at UH? Obviously, there's some way for them to do it. Why could they do it and not us? I gotta believe, along with Whitney, this is something that could be worked out.
Okay, um, Elmer, if you, do you have any comments on that, or?
No, I, I session. You guys have, uh, turn it on. The issue is not only liability, call. Something, I think, security, we have, it's set for like two to three hours. This is more than two hours. This, I've been at these meetings, all the neighborhood boards. So it can't be that way. It also has to do with the number of folks that tend to leave. The time will be small, sometimes it's gonna be big. So there are many issues, and I, and I answer, uh, just want to do, if you guys really want to pursue, you have to go and talk to Mr. Yonanaka. It's not with he is the one that has to comply. Not choice. So that's only comment.
Okay, thank you.
Um, can we maybe loop in whoever, s- sorry, Chair, can we also loop in Elmer, whoever, uh, you were getting the responses from regarding liability?
It came from our legal office. Come through me. That's through our legal office, so. It's not another individual. He comes through liability office, so.
Okay.
I can, I can respond to that.
And the, or the cost, the cost is something that community groups would be required to?
Yeah, they they have to pay for parking, so they have to be, also parking. Parking is not free for that, and if you rent all the space, it's not free. When you do community, yes, we can get a sponsor to offer that. But the University of Hawaii does not offer that unless we are hosting. So if the University of Hawaii is hosting a board meeting for the Manoa, we take it, but we're not a venue, right? So that's different, but again, we we can talk offline. It's better we talk offline.
Um, again, it's nine fifty-three right now. Uh, Laura, is your question really quick?
Um, yeah, I'm just for, um, Elmer, uh, perhaps at the meeting tomorrow night at the, um, Moili, Eli Board, uh, you could answer the questions about the, um, use factor on, um, the UH campus. I sent you some well back about the dormitories and study areas and all of that. Pardon me?
We can have these, uh, I could be need to sit there, so I I'll spend some time with that as well. But I'll try to answer some of your questions.
The other thing, now, the one also also from months and months ago, I've asked to have that art, the artwork by Brownley returned to the music thing, um, uh, sort of, um, semi-wall that's there, the
I can answer you the question. It's not gonna go back.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, um, Anson, do you have something regarding this, or?
Oh, I was about to ask if you guys have any other suggestions, like libraries that you guys know that are close by? We could do that. We could try see if that could fit in our budget, but if anything else, yeah. If you have any more suggestions, we, we will take it.
We've gone through all of this quite a bit, but I don't think that there's time to get into it now.
Yeah.
Um, so I think let's just tape, my suggestion would be to table this for this meeting, because we have six minutes left.
Yes, I I have to agree with Whitney, and so I think we do have, um, end the discussion on this matter, um, and also close the, um, question answers with, uh, Elmer at this time. Elmer, thank you for staying around for so long and for staying with us. Yeah, thank you. Um, real quick, I know it's five, five minutes left, um, I'm gonna skip on the board business matter regarding filling of vacancies, because we do not have time to square said person in at this point. Um, I'm gonna go on to item four, be on the agenda, the approval of the April twenty twenty-four minutes.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
I second that.
Second by member Bosel, um, is there any opposition to approving the minutes for April of twenty twenty-four? Hearing, seeing, none. Thank you very much. Uh, those are approved with unanimous consent. Um, any updates on primary urban center?
No, there's no updates except that Aria Lane and thirty-two oh two isn't listening to the city's PUC, who said no more building Maoka of Wilder, so.
Yeah.
Why in the world did the city spend the gazillions of dollars having the PUC develop an urban development plan uh, when they're not gonna listen, either the state or the city? That's all.
Or to the DPP and their recommendations on their bills.
That's right, same.
Hmm, yeah.
I have a question.
Any updates on, oh, sorry, who is this?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to wave my hand.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, why, why Wilder? Why not above Dole Street?
That, that's a question for the PUC. There was a long process of community, uh, you know, input on that. I I don't know that we can speak specifically to that, but that's uh, a years-long document, you know, outlining which areas can handle development and what levels of development.
Oh, that was
Yeah, it's been a city process going on for the last four or five years, so.
Google, Google the PUCDP for Honolulu, and there is a PDF that you can look at, you know, some hundreds odd pages at least of, um, their reasoning and the areas and all of that sort of stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Um, any updates on the Banyan Court or the Holloway flood mitigation projects?
Chair, on the Holloway flood mitigation project, according to the mayor, that project is in trouble. That's all I'll say.
Okay.
He felt, I think he, that was, uh, stated at the town, the recent town hall, the mayor said something about he worried that the price tag was getting too big and it wasn't going to. That's the reason it might fail.
Yes, thank you, member Bosel. Yes.
Okay, um, let's see.
Well, as regards, sorry, Chair, as regards the MBC project, no updates at, I think this time. There was a a rumor at one point recently that I heard going around the valley that it had like been approved already, but it's still very much in process of they have not submitted a new EA. Uh, I have not called in the last week, but I call like every other week or every week.
Like to the update on those, um, gosh, it's two minutes. I wish we had time for more community concerns and discussion and all that. Unfortunately, we do not. Um, I'm gonna skip to the announcements as is. We're, so the next meeting, again, because of the vote tonight, next regular board meeting will be held on Wednesday, June fifth via Webex online platform and at a location at Kapalama Hale Conference Room one five three for residents who have difficulties with air and capabilities, or will just go in there and show face in person. And don't forget the Olelo rebroadcast is going to be on the second and fourth Saturdays of the month at three o'clock PM or every third Tuesday at nine o'clock PM or online at Olelos website dot org slash TV schedule. And at this point, it is nine fifty-eight PM.
Chair, just a, oh, just a super fast question. Did we have a volunteer for the filling the vacancies, or that was just our standing thing?
It's a standing, as long as you have vacancies, um, if anybody out there who says they want to join for the neighborhood board, you have one minute to express that, and I encourage you to come over to the next meeting on June, because
And I think they can turn in their paperwork via email in the, in the time so that they don't have to do that in the meeting, right?
Um,
There was a person, yeah, yeah, sorry. There was a person that did came, uh, did email me, and he did send me his information, but I don't know if he's here at the moment.
Is it Jason DeMarco who's waving at the
Jason, hi, Jason, I'm so sorry that we didn't get to, um, uh, access the board tonight.
Um, First thing next time, put it on the agenda at the front so that he can participate.
And you could, and then, yes, that I will remember to pull the vac- filling the vacancies at the top, so that way you can join in and you can vote.
Send your paperwork to Anson in the meantime.
Yes, and that way, we can put, we can vote you and swear you in at that meeting at first thing we do. Thank you, Jason. I apologize. We look forward to seeing you in June, okay? Thank you, J- thank you, Jason. It's ten o'clock now. We are adjouring the neighborhood board meeting at this time. Thank you, everybody, for your patience with tonight's presentations, as well as all the other things that's happened. Looking forward to seeing everybody in June.
Night, everyone.
Good night.